Started. Good evening. It is 6:30 on Wednesday, July 9th, and I'm calling this meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board to order. My name is Chris LaValle, and I'm the Chair of the Board. Tonight, we will be following the posted agenda. This meeting tonight is in-person, and I know that we do not have Joel here tonight. Evan, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay. We do have Zoom available. If people do want it, they can email Evan. If Zoom does fail at any point in the meeting, we will continue the meeting in-person. Meeting is being televised live and recorded via Chelmsford Telemedia and will be available on their website and on YouTube for future viewing. All right. First item on the agenda is public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues within our jurisdiction but are not the subject of a pending public hearing before the Board or on the agenda tonight. So is there anyone from the public wishing to provide any comments during public input? Seeing there are none, we will move on to the next agenda item. And that is 5155 Middlesex Street and 70 Princeton Street, also known as the Landing at Chelmsford Mills. And this is the rezoning, the second area that we are considering for rezoning from IA to CBLT. Last meeting, we reviewed the parcels, took a look at some of the suggestions, and I updated the error in the table that you caught, updated that for the public hearing slides as well for Kate's Corner and CBLT and in these slides, and also updated all of the parcels, labeled all of the individual parcels that it's clear what stays and what has changed. Are there any comments from the Board?
From the use table, one of the things is a small warehouse. And just for point of clarification, what is the, I didn't look it up, I meant to, but what's the parameters for a small warehouse? Is that from your, is that from your warrant article, Chris?
Yes.
So was that less than 50? Less than 20?
Less than 20, I believe.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
Do you know, Evan?
I'm gonna look at the definition right now.
So I guess if it's so, so small, I just wanted to bring it up and see if we wanted to think about making that, I think it's a no for the CB light. And thinking of those structures, those businesses within this mill that are currently quasi-distribution or warehouse or something in that ilk, do we want to think about maybe making the small one planning board?
As opposed to a no? The challenge with that, though, is if you get a freestanding warehouse that might be coming before us in various areas that we might not want it. Whereas in this particular case, it's a little bit more contained within larger structure, so it's not as impactful. But if it was freestanding, it might be a little bit more impactful to the neighbors.
Okay.
So that'd be my only concern with that. And the owner does know that by going down this route, we would be essentially, those would become nonconforming, pre-existing.
Nonconforming, pre-existing, yeah. Okay. I just was thinking about it and thought it merited a reflection.
I mean, what are other people's thoughts?
I think we clearly define what a distribution center is.
Well, that's a no.
That's a no.
Yeah. But a warehouse.
So where's, I'm just looking at warehouse, okay. Small, those are all no's. Warehouse is a no. Yeah, I guess, because again, this is, the whole intent of this is to butt residential. And I don't think warehouses are very attractive to butt residential. Like, that's not the intent of this CB light, is to make that nice transition, right? That's why we have IA. Go build your warehouse in IA where people can't see it, it's not abutting people's homes.
Their homes.
Yeah.
Fair. Okay. Other people have a thought?
It does raise the question, how much storage does an enterprise have to have before that storage becomes a warehouse?
If I remember the discussion...
There is, obviously, for, for things incidental to a retail business, it's not.
Correct.
Or a warehouse, I mean, or a manufacturing.
But at a certain point along that spectrum, you would think of transition.
If I remember the discussion we had at that time, it was related to the primary use of the...
Yes.
So if the primary use is warehousing, then it would be a warehouse.
Right.
If the warehousing is a secondary use...
To manufacturing.
To manufacture something.
To manufacture something, then it's not a warehouse.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, I mean, you can have a big manufacturing operation in a small holding area, and it's not a warehouse.
Correct.
Or you could have a small manufacturing thing with a big storage area. When does it, I guess it's when you transition the primary...
More than 50% of the majority, of the majority of whatever's the highest.
Real estate.
Square footage.
Okay, so it would be done by square footage?
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I think it's completely fair.
Anything else on this? I also summarized on the slide after the map which parcels would get rezoned to what.
Which was helpful.
Yep. I found that very helpful.
And that was the same formatting as we did for Kate's Corner, so if you're gonna carry that through.
Has there been any feedback from the owner or from any of the tenants?
Or butters?
I mean, other than the fact that they asked, or the butters?
So there's been no, there's been no abutter engagement. The only property owner that's engaged in this process so far is the mill property owner who made the initial request.
Yeah. Okay.
I think Chris has some information for the Board, his, you know, next steps in moving forward.
Yeah, so just out of curiosity, are there any butters or neighbors to this area in the audience that wanted to speak on this? Okay. So the next step on this would be to bring it to the Vinyl Square group at the end of this month, I believe is their next meeting. As part of that, I also want to do some outreach to the neighbors and talk to that, talk to the Vinyl Square group about how they prefer doing that. I don't think this is gonna be ready for Fall Town meeting at all, so we'll have some time to go through that process and interact with the butters and the neighbors before we go into a formal public hearing like we did with Kate's Corner.
Evan, to that point, have the butters been notified so far of this, of these proceedings?
For Middlesex Street area?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, I wanted to wait until we engage with the Vinyl Square group first to talk to them about how they prefer to engage neighbors and things like that.
And what their thoughts are.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
And I figured there's no rush since we're not going to town meeting with this yet.
Oh.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. So the next agenda item is not 7 o'clock, so we can't start the public hearing yet. 300 Bill Ricka Road. Are you guys ready to come before us tonight or...
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. So if you're ready, we can take you now.
Sure. Andrew Tyne for the applicant access recovery, looking for a special permit for 300 Bill Ricka Road. I think this is our third meeting. I think there were two outstanding issues per the last meeting. We've provided revised plans that have been submitted to Evan Palansky via email to address the snow storage issue. There was an issue with the snow storage not being in places that were appropriate, and revised plans have been submitted which show the snow storage going to the back of the lot on a paved area. And then the second issue was discussion regarding the proposed or the issue of whether or not a sidewalk could be constructed out front.
Could you do me a favor and raise the microphone?
Sure.
Thanks.
The second issue was whether or not a sidewalk could be constructed out front. The owners, engineers, design team met with DPW. They spent some time going over the issue, and I did a drive-by because I wasn't familiar with it, and I guess there's a large drop-off there. So DPW submitted a letter, I don't know if the Board's received it, I do have a copy of that letter, and they indicated that from DPW's perspective, the proposal to extend the sidewalk from 270 Bill Ricka Road to the intersection, allowing people to cross the road, is an acceptable alternative for them, given the feasibility, the, you know, excessive cost of trying to put a sidewalk in front of 300 Bill Ricka Road. So I think we're, I don't know if everyone's familiar with that, but 270 Bill Ricka Road, I drove by there, I guess there's a building going up there, so they must be putting a sidewalk in front of that building, which is flat. It seems quite feasible, but this sidewalk would allow, obviously, people to cross the road and continue. There's a sidewalk the entire length of the road on the other side of the road, and frankly, there isn't a sidewalk on the 300 Bill Ricka roadside, so adding, adding a sidewalk there doesn't seem to really accomplish much, as long as people can cross the street.
Okay.
So I don't have anything else unless the Board has questions.
Evan, I noticed we don't have the plans on the...
I wanted to see.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah. I don't recall them coming in, but I was out of the office last week, so we'll track those down.
Okay. And Becky didn't say anything to me about the plans.
They likely came in.
Okay.
Yeah, I did email them, I don't know if anyone dropped off a hard copy, but all it did, I don't know if you recall, the snow storage was on a grassy area to the left of the building and also abutting the building on the right-hand side, and now it's moved to the back of the lot.
Yeah, they were both on grassy areas.
The snow storage is now proposed for this area here.
And did you keep the green space?
They kept the green space over here, we're just converting the number of spaces, I don't know, maybe...
Seventeen, I think.
I think it was seventeen, yeah.
And then the, the little, I don't know what, like, arrow-shaped place that was also gonna be snow storage?
No.
Is that green?
This is green space, yes. So the snow storage is gonna be in one spot.
Right.
It's back here.
But the green space was, it is a green space, and that will still remain.
That green space is staying, and this is being converted.
Perfect.
If the Board would like it, converted from parking spaces to green space, and then the sidewalk is obviously back.
Now, where you pointed out for the new snow storage, is that going over the parking area or...
No, no, it's in, this is the designated parking area for my client, the hashed areas of snow storage would be in this area here.
Okay, so it's paved.
Yeah.
No, it's paved, but it looks like it's also marked as parking spaces.
They are parking spaces, the snow would go on those parking spaces.
And then we had discussed the possibility that, I mean, I think it was your sense, which didn't seem to come up in the DPW's comments, that the DPW or, and/or the town eventually planned to sidewalk both sides, and so we had discussed the possibility of having, granting, of the owner granting an easement.
Yeah, so I just received an email from Christine Clancy, DPW Director. She probably anticipated this coming up. Her email says, "The area of 300 Bill Ricka Road was not identified as a section in the town's sidewalk master plan to add sidewalks. There is current, there is no current plan to add sidewalks on this side of Bill Ricka Road."
Oh, okay.
So that's good clarifying information.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you also planning to, is there also a plan to put plantings in that green space or is it going to stay?
I think right now it's just designated as, as a grassy area.
Okay.
I, I don't think the owner would mind if the Board would like something there, that's not an issue.
I think some plantings would be good.
Yeah.
I agree.
It's not a major undertaking.
I know the Sustainability Committee likes the tree cover for the parking areas.
Tree canopies are good.
And then, the other question I had was la, in our first meeting, there was discussion about the first floor being a limited area for the client's use with the...
My client's leasing the whole building.
Okay.
But I guess let's call it Phase 1. Phase 1 is to put the beds, the occupancy on the second floor for patients, and the first floor, they don't need the entire space for administration, so it's really just the area that they're occupying on the first floor. There was a plan that was submitted, it's really just kind of centrally located, so people would come in the entrance, and that would be kind of built out for the administration on the first floor, second floor would be occupied, and I believe you recall my client testifying that the first floor, they hope to expand in it to possibly put activities and other things and ancillary services for the patients and things of that nature.
Would there be any opposition to a special condition to come before the Board again if there were additional expansion on that first floor?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Beyond the plan that was submitted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are there any other questions?
Not here.
All right. I think, I don't usually like to vote on a project without the final plans before us, so I think I would like to continue this for one more meeting. We'll take a quick look at the plans next meeting, and I think it would be a pretty quick vote, assuming there are no more issues that come up. So before the next meeting, it would be good to also add some plantings to that.
Sure.
And then, do we have the O&M? Yeah, so the, also for the O&M plan, it would be good to make sure that the snow storage locations are outlined in the O&M plan.
Okay.
So that any time that a snow contractor does plow, they can refer to the O&M plan because most contractors won't look at the build plans.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. I will entertain a motion.
Let's see, what you need here is a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yep. To our next meeting, which is July 23rd. Motion by Mike, second by Anita, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
See you next meeting. All right. We still cannot do the public hearings yet, so we will move to the growth strategy. All right. So last meeting, we talked about the Managed Growth Strategy Task Force. I have not approached any of the Boards yet, I wanted to just double-check to make sure that we're okay with the approach of two Planning Board, one Select Board, 2020 Master Plan members, one, two Strategic Plan Committee members, two Town Meeting reps, two at-large, and then one ConCom. And what I can do is work with Evan to start the invitations, we'll collect the names, I'm sure there's gonna be some overlap, so if there's overlap, we can figure out what the final count would be and then see if we need to pare it down a bit. John, you said you'd put together some information for September?
Yes, on financial.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. So I'll work with Evan on that, and we can start getting that group ready in August for potentially a September, October ramp-up. Anything else on that topic? All right. Still have more time.
Well, I guess I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Of procedure.
Yep.
So we have this proposal for Chelmsford Street, and I noticed that they had included the Site Plan Review Sustainable Checklist, which made me realize that I haven't really been seeing that. So I don't know how we could get it to be the case that that's part of the packet from applicants on a routine basis.
I believe...
Is it only for, like, major redevelopment projects?
I think so, right?
New projects?
I've been primarily requiring it for, like, major new construction or major redevelopment or expansions.
So what about the 270? Does that precede this Sustainable Checklist?
The original approval, I don't recall, probably predated it.
Okay. Well, anyway, I just wanted to raise my hand and say...
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while since the Board's seen one. I think the last one was part of 150 North Road. The Car Wash should have had one, I can't recall.
I think it did, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. It's, so it's been submitted, you know, to what extent the Board is using that as a primary review document, and I'm not suggesting it was intended for that purpose. Clearly, clearly all are aware that there are a variety of other priority issues as part of a regulatory review.
Of course.
But the Sustainability Checklist is there in the event, you know, the Board wants to build capacity related to, you know, sustainability efforts.
What I've noticed, though, is that some of that stuff is already in what we usually look for, like bike racks and stuff like that, sidewalks. Some of it, though, I don't think goes far enough in some spots, so it might be worth revisiting. Did that checklist come from the Sustainability Committee?
It came through that process.
Okay.
And then just last night, the, the LID Nature-Based Solutions Task Force met, we're reviewing three proposals to select a consultant. So that deliverable could be used to make the Sustainability Checklist within Nature-Based and LID more robust.
Hmm. Okay. That might be a good thing to keep in mind.
We should have an overflow space?
I was just gonna ask that.
Um, my suggestion on the overflow is if, if the Board's gonna, are you gonna start with zoning public hearings?
Yeah.
Then people who are here for Chelmsford Street can either go into 205, room 200 across the hall, just to make some extra room for people who want to sit and participate in the zoning public hearing.
Okay. Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. We will, I guess we could do liaison updates at this point. Does anyone have any liaison updates?
There's a DPA meeting tomorrow that I'll be attending, so I don't have one for this time around.
Well, I liaised with the Historical Commission.
Yep.
Nothing in particular to report there of any interest to us, but there's another thing I'd like to bring up, which is the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We're gonna have a meeting this coming week, I think. Evan, we gonna move that, given that we have a bunch of...
Yeah, the July 17th will not work for most members.
Yeah, it's not gonna work for most people, but it will be coming up soon, and one of the things on it is the Planning Board's tasks under that plan, and I just wanted to let you know and figure out how we might want to present that. You might just want to come, I don't, it's, it's not a, it's not a heavy lift.
When is it?
Well, we don't know yet.
Did this exercise once before?
Yeah.
It's the same, same exercise, it's just a year later.
In transit, in process, blah, blah.
We can put it on for the July 23rd meeting as a group, or if the Chair just wants to panel?
Yeah, let's just quickly review it at the 23rd meeting and then...
Okay. Yeah, I think we should just go over it quickly, and then if necessary, I could present it or Evan can present it, we're both reasonably familiar with it.
Okay.
So that's coming up.
All right.
And then we have the LID, the committee for looking into the, to consultants for that, but again, not much in particular to report.
It's kind of, we had our first meeting last night, which was mostly organizational.
Yeah.
Like, looking at, we all looked at the, we had the request for proposal, we had three proposals to review and then rank on various criteria, and basically, we went around the table and talked about people's thoughts on pluses and minuses of each of the three proposals, and then made a strategy to go forward, which is we're gonna interview all three firms. We couldn't, we couldn't get, we couldn't jettison any of them.
Yeah, they were, they were all pretty close in terms of ranking.
Kind of clustered. And then we're developing questions for those interviews, and those will take place at the end of the month, hopefully, assuming their availability, and then we'll make a decision with a target to, I don't know what you want to call it, go live in early September.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to also say the Housing Production Plan, there's a draft of it that's available under the Housing Advisory Board.
From the town's Newsflash homepage.
And it's in comment period right now, so if people have a lot of time and want to review 150 pages of Housing Production Plan Draft from NIMCOG, we would love some comment.
No, that was, that's required to be presented and approved by the Planning Board as well as the Select Board. So NIMCOG is hoping to present it to the Planning Board on July 23rd. The comment period closes Monday, July 21st.
How long do you think that presentation's gonna be?
Um, no more than 10, 15 minutes.
Just a few slides.
Okay. Few slides for 100-something page report?
Yeah, he did a good job of...
Like, most reports is a large existing conditions, assessment, and then action on items, so that's how it's broken down.
Okay.
Center Village is meeting tomorrow, we're gonna be talking about the Cushing Place Bridge and their thoughts on it. They also have a presentation from NIMCO coming in on the Chelmsford Street project and the scope of work, and then also gonna be talking about the placeholder of traffic improvement from Mass DOT, which looks to be putting stoplights on Chelmsford Street at 495. So I'll know more... So, I'll know more about that after tomorrow's meeting.
Both sides?
Yes, both sides, which is gonna be a lot of stoplights in a very...
Both sides?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a lot of stoplights in a row there.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'm waiting to get some more information about that, so.
Alright. CONCOM met last night. They had a reorg meeting, same people in charge. Carl is still the Chair, and Chris Garan is still the Vice, so no change there. They had a pretty light meeting yesterday. No, no big issues that came up. And nothing else to report from them. Any other reports?
That doesn't happen.
I know, it doesn't usually happen.
Just for NIMCOG, Chris, so I have a NIMCOG Council meeting next Wednesday, and other than that, I have no other report at this time.
Okay. Alright, so it is almost seven. Evan, do we need to read that into the record?
No, just, just, just make it, make it clear that you're opening the public hearing.
Alright. It being seven o'clock, I am now opening the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments. We will take that first. So my plan is to run through the slides of all of the proposed amendments first, so that people can see what we're proposing. And then I will likely do about 10 minutes of, or a quick round of comments from the board, and then about 10 minutes of questions from the public and comments from the public. We, I will keep this open probably into August to give people a chance to digest the information, to provide feedback in person and by email. But we wanted to make sure that people had enough chance to see the information and provide feedback. There are a lot of zoning amendments, so I didn't want to take up the entire meeting tonight with this, and given the fact that we're going to continue it for a few meetings, I figured a 10-minute time limit on each article would be sufficient. By the way, 10 minutes at the most. We don't have to do 10 minutes. Because there's, there may be some articles that don't have any comments. Alright, so I will do the CB Light zoning first.
Do you mind, it might be in your slides, I'm not sure, but do you mind, or would you feel comfortable just kind of recapping in a kind of thumbnail sketch, like what's driving this, what we're trying to accomplish?
Yep, that's in my slides.
Cool.
Alright, so the what and why. So there are a number of zoning conflicts that have been identified in town, and there are a number of options to mitigate these. Overlays are good for expanding options available to a property, but if we're looking to restrict or to adjust things, then changing the zoning underlying is usually the best option. We don't want to negatively impact zones in other parts of town where there are no zoning conflicts, so opting to create a new zone specifically designed for this application made the most sense to the board. Looking at the conflict areas, we used Kate's Corner as a model, and we also, as you saw earlier tonight, used the Middlesex Street area as another pressure test for the zoning. So we decided to create a new zone called CB Light. It's the solution that we see as most effective for at least some of the zoning conflicts that we have in town related to IA zones. We're going to, we're planning to use this as a transition zone between IA and other zones like residential zones to lessen the negative impacts to other non-IA zones. And as I mentioned, once we do create this, we're looking to apply it at Town Meeting to Kate's Corner, potentially to the 150, or the 51 to 57 Middlesex Street area, and even maybe down the road to Riverneck. We've got to take a look at that. So there are a number of actual changes to the bylaws that this new zone necessitates. We do need to create a new zoning district. We have to update the use table for the new zone. We are updating the dimensional requirements for the new zone, the CEIOD dimensional requirements and applicability. We update the properties for the new zone. We update the street frontage for the new zone, and we're creating a new use defined for this zone as well as adjusting the current use of light manufacturing. So, we're also looking to apply this new zone in separate article, as I mentioned, to Kate's Corner, and then those are the other two areas that we're looking to potentially apply this to, possibly more. So the use table, we've been over, this is quite an eye chart, but it is available in our slides, where we really look at a balance between the CB, which is the commercial district, and the IA, and what parts of the commercial district would be good to a but residential. And a but IA as well. So I'm not going to go through these. You can refer to those. Can you go back one more? So there is a, an accessory use parking lot footnote that we have added as one of the changes to the use table footnotes as well. Dimensional requirements, again, we, we were looking at a balance between the CB and the IA, and for the footnote seven is what we added in for the side and rear set packs, looking at what made the most sense for this zone. This is a slide that has the CAID purpose and intent, just to give you some background on that overlay. We didn't, we're not changing anything there. And these are the site and building requirements for that overlay that we have added in. We've also increased the minimum, we're budding residential use property from 25 to 30 feet. Other changes that mirror the CB zoning characteristics, update to the property line landscaping for new zone, and updates the street frontage for the new zone as well. So we've also looked at our current manufacturing definitions. The current heavy manufacturing does not change. I just added that for reference. The manufacturing light does change. And I think I have a slide in here that shows what is actually changed. Yeah, if you can go two slides forward. So that's the marked-up version of the light manufacturing. We've clarified some of the wording in here to make it aligned with the ultra-light manufacturing definition that we're adding. We've also clarified that some of those materials in there were, it was unclear what the, if it was the manufacturing of the plastic itself or plastic products, so we clarified that. And then if you can go back one, we've added the ultra-light manufacturing definition, really containing the manufacturing operations. We've provided some examples in here. Limited loading infrastructure and tractor-trailer use are two characteristics that we've included. And it also excludes the heavy industrial activities.
And, and Chris, can I just interrupt here real quick?
Yeah.
And the purpose of this, again, is to, you know, manufacturing has a lot of industrial connotation, well, uses, right, industrial. And the CB light, it's proposed as the buffer between IA, industrial, and neighborhoods. So creating a CB, a manufacturing light that allows some work on a smaller scale makes sense to me, right? That's the purpose, just to kind of keep that. That's why we have, ultra-light is in CB light, right? And we have manufacturing light is in the IA and the CB. And what is IS, I forget?
Special industrial.
Special industrial, which, I don't even know, do we have much in town for that?
It's all town-owned.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so that's the first one. The second one is Kate's Corner rezoning. So again, our goal here is to create this new zone as a solution for the zoning conflicts, to lessen the negative impacts of potential IA uses right up against residential areas. And this proposal is applying our new zone to Kate's Corner. So these are the current parcels around the Kate's Corner area. We've got the Lockheed Martin Building in the middle listed as IA. We've got the Old Maxwell's on the left listed as CB. Some of the residential areas are half CB, half RB. Top right, you've got the CA and CB down below, and then a budding residential down below. So looking at the uses on the ground, what we're proposing to rezone these two is listed up here. We're proposing to align the uses in the zoning to what's actually happening on the ground. So the residential will become residential, public areas will become public, and then the new CB light will replace the IA, and then expand out from there for the other CB light potential areas. And this just gives a listing of what the parcels are, what they are currently, and what they are, what we're proposing to rezone them to. Okay, next one, massage establishment. So, this proposed bylaw change came about as a request from the Building Commissioner based on a current situation where a massage therapist was moving across the street from one office to another, and it wasn't zoned as a massage establishment, so there was some confusion about that. There was also some language in there referring in Section D to the Chumstead Board of Health for the licensing, and massage therapists are actually not licensed by the Board of Health, but they're licensed by the state, so we've updated that as well. What we've essentially done is taken the state definition of massage and replaced our old definition with that, and then referred to the licensing, the state licensing bylaw for the Section D. We've also, we're also proposing to make things simpler for spas and therapeutic areas, proposing to make this a byright usage instead of the Board of Appeals. And that is that article. The next one, the definition of family. So, this one came up at the last town meeting, because in a recent zoning review by the Attorney General's Office, they found a few areas of the bylaws that were potentially problematic and could potentially have some future lawsuits coming our way. The current definition that we have is unlawful, and it will open us up to civil action and overturn decisions. We did propose a definition at Springtown Meeting, and it did fail. Since then, I have done some additional research with other definitions across the state. We have revised the proposal a bit, and now we're presenting the updated proposal. Actually, if you can go back. One more. Actually, these are the older slides. So I will... Can you go back one more? Alright, go forward. Alright. I'll, I'll make sure that we have the updated version attached, but essentially, you can stay on this one for a few minutes. But essentially, zoning regulates the use of land and not personal relationships or family composition. Our current definition is not inclusive of different household types, and familial connections are impossible to determine through building permit and occupancy reviews. Enforcement would be, could be intrusive. So, in addition to that, we are really looking at defining the use of the land and not trying to change a society definition of a family. In terms of enforcement, property owners are responsible for compliance. When zoning enforcement is requested, and someone thinks that there's a violation, then the town inspector would go out and figure out what the zoning is. In terms of how this relates to other codes and regulations, we do have a building code which regulates construction and fire safety. The state sanitary code regulates the number of people who can occupy a unit based on size. The state licensing law regulates lodging houses, hotels, and the occupancy tax is related to hotels and guest accommodations. So in researching other towns, one or more persons occupying a dwelling unit and living together as a single housekeeping unit, this is the definition that's been used by around 150, 100 to 150 of the 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts. I listed some examples of other towns here that have used this definition or something similar. Some of the towns and cities have added wording at the end as distinguished from a group occupying a boarding house, group home, lodging house, club, fraternity, or hotel. A few towns have kept the blood relative definition in there and added the word "or" in then this definition. So why do towns and cities use this language? There are really five reasons. The first is it, it complies with the Fair Housing Act. It is the model language that a lot of the regional planning organizations use. It's administrative simple, simplicity, and the State Supreme Judicial Court in cases such as Amherst versus Board of Appeals of Wellesley College, and Commonwealth versus Jaffe have reinforced that the zoning bylaws must not discriminate based on familial status. And Commonwealth versus Jaffe is really the precedent-setting case for this, if you go to the next slide. They don't provide a definition in their decision, but they do provide four aspects of what an ideal definition has, and we've tried to include all four in our definition. And the fifth one is, the fifth reason why is that the cap on occupancy in the definition of family zoning could be found to conflict with byright ADUs. That is a definition, or a finding from the Housing, Equal Housing Office in the state. So when looking at our definition, we have had three objectives: remove references to... we have had three objectives: remove references to the degree of kinship, update the definition to be more consistent with state law, and clarify the distinction between transient accommodations such as hotels. And so what we've proposed is below in the underline, "One or more persons occupying a dwelling unit who share access to common living, cooking, and eating areas, and living together as a single housekeeping unit with permanence and cohesiveness." Okay. Next one, school impacts. Do the ADU one after.
I'm presenting all of these at Fall Town Meeting?
Yep.
Oh, God.
He's gonna be busy.
He'll be a four-nighter, I think.
Yes.
All right.
Just in time.
So during a recent, during that same review from the Attorney General, they found that the waivers in consideration of fiscal impacts, which are the impacts to our town services from projects, the land court has held it's unlawful for a special permit granting authority to consider school impacts when reviewing multifamily housing projects. So what we have done, again, is we brought it to town meeting. It was combined with another zoning article at the time, and both of those did fail. So what we've done is we've separated it out from the more controversial one, and we have not changed anything on this one this time around. So what we have done is we've added the underlined text here and removed the crossed-out text. Okay. Final one. Our ADU laws. During another recent zoning review from the Attorney General's Office, most of the ADU law, bylaw that we did pass at our town meeting was approved and found, and the Attorney General found no issues. However, there were two areas that they did find were problematic. And they did approve the bylaw with, on the condition of one deletion and one recommended change to address a potential second deletion. Town Council has advised us on the wording of the update, and we should be good to go on that. So here, the recommended deletion from the Attorney General is the text in strike-through here to lots and principal dwellings. The Attorney General said that we can apply the dimensional standards to the principal dwelling and not the lot. In the updated text, it's really about making sure that we're not requiring special permits and forcing ADUs into the special permit process. So that is just clarifying language Okay. Those are the presentations. I'm probably not going to do this again in the next meetings, but we can address specific ones if people wish. So at this point, I will open it up to no more than 10 minutes of public comment on each of the zoning articles. First, we will start with the CB light, general zoning article first. So does anyone wish to speak to that article?
I do.
Come on up.
Hi.
Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, so Steve Kowalski, 11 Maple Road. So I'm just curious around the philosophy of zoning. Is zoning intended to be for the current state in the past, or is it intended to be future-looking?
Future-looking.
It is, it's intended to be future-looking, but oftentimes, because of what has been done in the past, it does impact some of the zoning that has to happen in the future.
Like, for example, right?
Yeah.
129, that got rezoned in the past, back in the 80s, as IA. It'd be, like, as much as we would, you know, some of us don't like what's being built there, changing it now to RB, like, putting it back to RB, because we're, people are saying that you can't get office buildings there, wouldn't do us any good and wouldn't make sense. So we have to look at what's been zoned in the past and how to make it... So it's a bit of both, I guess. And that's what we're trying to do with the CB light, right? Like, see what it's been zoned, how we can kind of make it better for the future
Yeah.
with what we've had in the past, handed to us.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm just trying to figure out, like, what is the intention of the neighborhood, right? And so the other question is around how we will allocate our land next to things that are already existing. So the other question is, would we ever zone this new proposed zone next to any other school? Right? Is industrial generally, manufacturing generally, something that we want next to schools?
So we now, we have three definitions of manufacturing.
Yeah.
It really depends on what the area is. So here, we may end up having an area, because we're trying to lessen the impact of IA, we may have this CB light next to a school. In other areas, we wouldn't put it in there because there's no IA there next to that school. In some areas, there may be.
Yeah, and so if you change the zoning, what happens? It's, everything is grandfathered in as it is today, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question is, would we also put this new zone next to a well-loved and used pond and any other part of the town?
So again, we're, we're trying to minimize the impact. If we were, if we were zoning this area from scratch, probably not. But because we're having to work with the areas that are already there, the IA that's already there, we're, we're trying to minimize the impact and restrict the zoning.
And to be clear, like, part of the problem is with this particular parcel, Kate's Corner, is it's, like, that's, it's currently zoned IA, one of the pieces. Last thing you want is for the current owner to leave. And you run into an incident that we ran into on River Neck Road, where someone wants to build a distribution center, which is currently allowed.
Right.
Right? So we recognize that the fact is, there is an office building there. Yes, it's across from the school. Would any of us probably put something like that there? Had we been on the board 40, 50 years ago, probably not, but that's what happened. So the CB light, which is why we put the ultralight manufacturing, to fall into the CB light, was specifically to buffer that, right? We know that it is what it is. Should the tenant leave and someone else comes in, it's an office building. We don't want a distribution center. We don't want, what was the other thing that was?
Manufacturing.
No, the cost of Big Maxwell's when it was being sold, a contractor's yard.
Yeah, contractor's yard.
Right, like, we, you know, we heard that these are things we don't want next to residential.
Right.
Right? So that's kind of the thought process behind this zone.
Yeah, I totally understand the predicament that we're in. Generally, when I look at planning, if nothing's going to change any time until there's a turnover, and, so first, I appreciate you all looking out for the benefit of the community and also for the neighborhood, right? So I totally get it. We don't want industrial right next to a school or a pond. My thought, and I just really look out to the rest of the community here, is thinking about how do you want to use the land in the future? This stuff isn't going to affect us, or likely us, it's going to affect our children, right? And so if you look at into the future, how are we going to use this land? I would propose that we do not use land for manufacturing next to schools, next to one of our gems in ponds, right? The other thing is Lockheed, while they seem to have been a good neighbor, the question is around enforcement and compliance. So the other question is, who's monitoring the air quality? Because I hear a fan spin up, my brother worked right across the street from a Lockheed facility in Florida. Five years ago, mass class action lawsuit, people had lots of cancer and other stuff because they were spewing toxins in the air, right? People had serious health issues, right? And so the other question is, if we're going to have a school right next to this manufacturing facility, who is ensuring compliance, right? So that's one of the other things I'd consider, you know, I'd really ask all of you to consider as you make a decision. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Bob Laporte. I live at 38 Parkerville Road. And I just have a couple of questions. Well, this proposed zoning, and this is Kate's Corner, I'm really focused on, but...
Could we hold on that for a minute? This is more on the generalized...
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other more generalized CB light? All right. Now we'll move on to the Kate's Corner. Sorry. I just want to make sure there was no one else.
So Lockheed Martin is the principal property that's going to be impacted by this. So my question is, given the use of Lockheed Martin, which probably is light manufacturing, whether that remains a, a use that's consistent with the proposed zoning change, and whether it not, whether the change meets dimensional requirements under the new zoning, so the property doesn't become non-conforming in use and dimensions?
Yes. That was part of our, our analysis of this, was to make sure that we weren't changing it so that it was non-conforming. So it does, it does conform to use and dimensional.
So with regards to the accessory use of the zoning change, and I'm thinking more of the Agway property, where it might be used for parking. It's hypothetical, but in terms of the setback requirements, if it were to be used for parking, does parking require the same setback requirements? So for example, on the residential, where a board is a residential, and it's going to be, I think, 30 feet, or in the front yard is 60 feet, do they, in the parking use, need to meet those dimensional requirements?
Evan, I'm seeing you're looking it up now.
It's not the same as the structures.
But...
Parking areas, 10 feet from a property line, 20 feet from a street line, and then there are landscape buffer requirements adjacent to residential properties.
So I guess my, my idea would be that it, those setback requirements might be increased where it abuts a residential district for this particular use to protect the residents if they don't have to meet these, you know, for the parking, because I suspect that's how it's going to be used.
And there's landscaping requirements if it abuts residential, correct?
Yes.
Meaning, like, the screening, like, residential, like...
It's correct.
The screening requirements if it abuts residential.
Correct. Plus, it requires Planning Board approval, site plan approval, both fully engineered plans, public hearing.
Yeah, so I understand, but the, the dimensional requirements, I don't know if the Planning Board has the, the authority to change if it's a 10-foot setback from the side lot line, that they could increase it for the Lockheed property to 25 feet. So I guess, that's what I'm saying. I think it's maybe appropriate where parking use is going to be allowed as an accessory use, that the setback requirement be changed to give a greater buffer to the residential areas. And, you know, parking is always a big thing with industrial property. So the change from heavy industrial IA to this new proposed district, if it's a ultralight manufacturing use, does that change the parking requirements per employee, so they all stay the same?
Yep.
And I guess the, I get two more comments on traffic. I think there were some things the Planning Board was take, going to take into consideration for the impact of a project. I didn't see the word "traffic" in there. And I think that could be added because, you know, at Kate's Corner, with the intersection of Maple and Acton Road, there's a, there's a traffic problem there today. And I think some thought should be given to traffic in any event, no matter where the project is, but in particular here.
We did, we did consider traffic as one of the, one of the thought process that we were looking at this.
Okay.
That is more project-specific.
Or site plan.
Project-specific. And so when projects come before us, we will almost always, especially for these types of projects, have a traffic study done. And so that, that would be part of that process.
I guess the last thing is on parking lots and the fact that Hot Pond is in proximity to this. You know, we all have concern about the water quality of Hot Pond today. And parking lots can generate, at least even if there's no water surface discharge in a budding lots, it all goes into the, the ground, and that water feeds the springs in Hot Pond. So I guess this would be part of your approval process to make sure that whatever parking lot is created, that it takes into consideration
Yeah.
the groundwater.
Yeah. And I know that this board is very strict with the stormwater requirements on parking lots. We're, we consider that carefully.
And I think that's all my comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Edgar, Attorney General. I know you've heard from me before. I'm a direct abutter to the former Thompson backslash Agway. When I initially bought the property, as you know, it was all zoned commercial. I'm kind of wondering why CB light had not been offered to me instead of being everything just taken away. Kind of concerned about that because I thought we were also supposed to be trying to preserve the area for the futures, and I'm not seeing that. I'm, all I'm seeing is takeaways. It is concerning because not asking to become a full-fledged commercial business generating equipments and stuff like this, and/or influencing more traffic than usual. Today's things are based on e-commerce, which is usually mail-in, mail-out. We already have UPS, USPS, FedEx, Amazon, whatever you want to call it. Those initiate enough traffic alone, and we know this, but those are daily things. Those are normal. And it doesn't bring any more impact into the area than usual. In fact, everybody on the street probably uses Amazon these days. So I'm, I'm wondering what I need to do to preserve my existing property from going directly to residential, only to be able to maybe accommodate CB light, but with some restrictions, more than the CB light that's being offered. I don't know if that's something to think about, but one thing, one thing is for certain. Once things have changed, they're permanent. And we all know that. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's the first one.
Hi, good evening. I'm Pam Byam-Rivard, First Lane, Chelmsford, on the pond. And I've been before you. My main concern is the pond. Bob Laporte verbalized those concerns. But I did want to remark and ask you a question about the, the new changes. A lot of them I really like, and I think provide a good buffer for the pond and all the public, the new public areas. And I really appreciate that. My question is about Lockheed's parking lot. So, right, right now, that is Zone CA, which is the same as Kate's Corner and the church in there. You are keeping Kate's Corner and the church... You are keeping Kate's Corner and the church CA, I believe. But for some reason, you want to include the parking lot CBLT. In my mind, in my looking for possible threats, that gives Lockheed a lot more space to expand and really increase their, their manufacturing or their industrial footprint in, in our little village. So I was wondering what the, what the thought was, why that had to be changed? So that's, that's my concern for tonight.
So Evan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the fact that it is a CB lot...
It's CA, right?
Oh, sorry, CA lot, and used as IA parking is a zoning conflict in and of itself.
It is, but the file indicates that it received a use variance from the zoning board to be used as, as parking in a CA for an industrial use.
Where is the parking lot?
Right here.
That's what I thought.
It's quite a large parcel of land and represents the potential for a lot of expansion of that, of three, up to three-story building in there, in that area. Especially if Lockheed is able to purchase Maxwell's and use that for parking, that's, that could, well, you, I made my point.
Yeah.
Evan, just correct me if I'm wrong again, but with that, with that... Use variance, thank you. They are able to expand now.
So the use variance is specific to the parking?
Specific to parking?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so maybe we should leave that bit?
Well, I think the intent is they do need to expand.
Well, they already have that use variance.
They have the parking, use variance.
Right.
But they are, they are looking to expand into that lot.
Right, so that would come, then that process would come through us, the Planning Board, which through that process, we could, we, the abutters can come in, like, we could manage it through that process.
Why do you have to change it to begin with? If you don't want them expanding in there, and certainly the residents who show up here do not want them to expand in there, why, why change it? It's CA now, they can't expand now, so why put that, put that potential out there and then have to fight it down the road?
So, just to be fair, I think Lockheed did have some neighborhood reach out about their intention to expand, because they were looking at buying the Maxwell properties that, I think me and Marcy, they were there. I attended them because I wanted to hear what the neighbors had to specifically say. And to be honest, I kind of went in there with a very, I didn't want, I wasn't looking for this area to be expanded. People who know me know me that I'm not a big fan of industrial and neighborhoods. But I was actually pleasantly surprised of the neighborhood reaction at this meeting, the discussions between Lockheed and the neighborhood.
When was this? I'm sorry, when was this?
Do you remember? Was it May?
No.
No, this is...
A long time ago.
This was a long ago.
March, I think.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Last fall?
Yeah, because it was around, no, because when were the, when were the due dates for...
Because I think we had a pretty good turnout for the first...
February, it was February of this year, which kind of kicked off this whole CB light. So, again, I was very pleasantly pleased with their initial thoughts and the neighborhood reaction. They also addressed some concerns. Again, this project would have to come in front of the Planning Board to be approved.
So are you changing the zoning just to accommodate Lockheed's expansion?
No, that's not the, our initial attempt, what started this whole thing, was Maxwell's was for sale, and someone wanted to buy and put a contractor yard. And the whole neighborhood appeared here one day, and that's when we all said, we need to fix this because this is a problem here. We have an industrial area in a beautiful part of town, which is by far my favorite part of town.
I think so, too.
I will admit, I love that area. So that started it. And Lockheed, I mean, they can say it, like, you know, I was ready to zone it all RB, to be quite frankly, like, get rid of all of industrial, like, I don't want industrial, I don't want an office building there, I want to get rid of it all. That's, and we opened, that was like, let's fix this area, because it's a nice area, we want to preserve it, let's fix it. That started our whole process. Unbeknownst to us, Lockheed had also during this time, or before this time, was looking at expanding, had reached out, was looking at the Maxwell property potentially in expanding. And that kind of all played into it, into us calling the CB light for allowing good businesses that have worked nicely in town, and this is a unique situation, allow them the ability to expand and stay in town, because they are good neighbors in, in this lot. But we do not want, like, should they ever leave, we don't want a bad tenant there, like, and what, and that's how we define a bad tenant.
Leaving, leaving that CA is not going to affect the bad tenant potential, right? Leaving it as it is is, is doing no harm and, and doesn't increase the likelihood that a new tenant's going to ruin the area by bringing something else in. As far as the neighbors wanting this, I've been to every meeting that's been open, and I haven't, other than this gentleman, I haven't heard any of our neighbors say, boy, we'd love Lockheed to expand, take over more of South Chelmsford. So that's, that's, I don't know where that meeting was.
Again, like, I went in there with, like, I'm not, you can ask people in town, I'm not, I've not been a fan of developers in general, and I went in there with very, nope, you know, I wanted it all RB, I wanted it back to that old...
So would it be of help in clarifying what the neighbors want if there's up to, could we offer a petition with signatures for the neighbors? What do we do to clarify what the neighbors want?
I think, so right now, this is changing the zoning to CB light, which I think makes sense because it is an empty parking lot, and I think that's the right spot for it. I think during the time that should they come in with a special permit to, to expand, that's the time to voice your opinion of what you want there, how big you want them to expand, if you want them to expand at all. That's the time to do it, and that's the mechanism to do it.
But why couldn't we just leave it CA?
Yes, that's exactly...
With the use variance that's currently in place.
Because the use variance only includes the parking. It does not include expansion. The other thing to keep in mind, if you look at the use table, the CA and the CB light are very comparable districts. There's a slight difference, but they're very comparable districts. And we've, we've done that on purpose to minimize...
So why make a distinction?
To allow Lockheed to do what they need to do and to minimize the impact...
When you say "need," what they need to do in our neighborhood? I don't understand that.
We're trying to balance the needs of the neighborhood and the businesses in that area, and minimize the negative impacts that IA currently offers.
And I think you've done a good job with, and I pointed out, I like that you took off the overlay on the residential districts. You relied that public, but I think unnecessarily changing that parking lot to CA, to CBLT, opens up another big battle for us in the neighborhood.
So just to add a little bit of comment, so the difference between CB light and CA, really for the area that you're talking about, is it requires Planning Board approval for light manufacturing. Heavy manufacturing is still limited, so it's still have to come to the Planning Board, have a public hearing, and that's where it can be discussed. But the whole idea behind CB light is actually adding some protection to these neighborhoods that have residential areas abutting them. You know, it's helping with that buffer, we're trying to look at the future so that you don't end up with IA, and a huge, like, warehouse there.
Yeah, that's, and I understand that, and I appreciate what those two parcels, that being done. But I think if it comes before this board, who has already changed the zoning, if, if this board has changed the zoning to allow light manufacturing, what's your argument against fighting for light manufacturing when they want to expand?
We have the mechanism within our approval under a special permit, that if it doesn't fit the neighborhood, we can say no. And you can look at my record of how many times I've done that.
I know.
I don't care how many, how big it is, how, like, this or that, but if it, if the neighborhood, it doesn't add value to the neighborhood, I've said no before. And I've been the sole one sometimes saying no, but I strongly feel that. So, again, I think this is one of those balancing acts, and I do hear you, and I do understand your concern.
Understand my logic?
I do understand. And, you know, these are one of those decisions that I, I, I'm more comfortable with changing this to CB light. And again, I went from...
Because of this neighborhood thing?
And again, I went from, I wanted this all, like, I wanted them gone, I didn't want like, an office park there at all, I wanted this to be converted into single-family neighborhoods, right? Like, that's where my head was initially. And this was over a long process.
Thank you for listening, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Griffin, 12 Parkerville Road. I've been in front of you before. I just want to highlight a couple of things that others have mentioned. One was about Lockheed in a different state, as far as air quality goes. I did a count from Lockheed to the pond. There were nine homes, 11 cases of cancer. And those are the only ones I know, all right? And that I attribute to air quality. We have noise issues, where Lockheed has, I don't know, compressors or some kind of machines that operate round the clock. So if you go out at 3:00 AM, you're hearing it. If you have company, they're like, what is that? And it's Lockheed. And that's what I say, oh, it's Lockheed. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about them expanding. If you have a parking lot where Maxwell's was, that entire area was wetlands. If you had gone to any of the farmer's markets, that whole parking area was wet. Didn't matter the time of day. So if that's wet now, and they make it a parking lot, where is that runoff going? It's going to go back into our water system. So I'm concerned about that. So I just wanted to restate in, like, bullet points where my concerns are. I am a butter to them, honestly. I do not want any additional growth. In the middle of the night, in the dead of winter, it's daylight because of their lights. So I don't, I don't want them closer to me, I don't want the trees removed, because that's what I'm dealing with now. So that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
I do want to mention, if people have air quality concerns, you could direct those to the Board of Health. And if people have noise or light concerns, you can direct those to the building inspector.
Which will be done, but I just want to make a point, as far as what's going on with me, and I'm only one of the direct neighbors.
Okay.
But we, I mean, we, we do have regulations in place for light and noise, and, I mean...
Who's monitoring those?
Well, the building inspector is supposed to.
And, like, if you put in, and I know for, like, someone who I know, who abuts the Chelmsford Mall, their lights, the old Chelmsford, the Stop &amp; Shop in the center of town, the lights were, like, flashing into their yard. They called up, they called up the building inspector, and it's been called up the business, done. They changed it.
I took pictures to do that.
They just didn't know. They just, like, yeah, they just didn't...
In the middle of the night, I took pictures of their lights.
So I would just contact the town, building inspector, air quality, the Board of Health, and they will contact the, the company and come to a resolution to it. Because we do have regulations in town that it shouldn't be doing that. It shouldn't, you shouldn't have, at nighttime, it looking, shining into your yard.
It's daylight at night. I just wanted to voice my opinion. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
I was just going to say, there's also that click fix that you can put all that stuff into, and they respond that way.
What's that?
The C-click fix.
Click fix on that town's website.
All right. We are over the 10 minutes on that one, so I do want to keep moving. As I mentioned, there will be other opportunities in the next few meetings to continue voicing comments. So the next one is massage establishment. Are there any public wishing to speak on that one? All right. The next one is the family updates. Anyone wishing to speak to that one? School impacts. Anyone wishing to speak to that one? All right. Where are we at? ADUs? Anyone wishing to speak to that one?
What do you think if nobody wants to speak to any of them? If we could circle back for another five minutes and see...
We could.
Just before people leave.
Did I cover all of them?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And I will give some more time to Kate's Corner if people are willing, wishing to speak.
You guys talking about the Chelmsford Mall at all?
We will be.
Next, next one.
That's next.
I thought I was in the wrong room.
Anne Sobolinski, Prince Lobel for Lockheed Martin. I would just like to thank the board for the time and effort that you put into the zoning bylaw changes. There were a lot of meetings, and we appreciated all of the thought that went into the proposal. You know, some things have been stated here this evening that we have not heard before, the claims of air quality causing cancer and things of that nature. Obviously, we will look into those issues and we can respond to them. With respect to the rezoning of the property, I mean, we have been a good neighbor, we do have, you know, outreach programs, the name and information of the facilities director is available to people. We've, when someone had a complaint about lights from the parking lot, we installed lots of landscaping. This is not a situation where the property owner has been, you know, unresponsive to members of the community, so if there are issues, we will certainly endeavor to make sure that those are adequately addressed. But it is a need for this facility to expand. We don't want to go elsewhere. We've had a very good relationship with the town, providing a lot of jobs for residents both in Chelmsford and in the surrounding area, and we would like the opportunity to continue that and to be a good neighbor to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Maybe, it might be worthwhile to maybe have another outreach to the abutters about your, your thoughts for expanding, what you're thinking, how much you want to do, what have you.
That's a, that's a very good idea. We would agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will take a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Continue the public hearings?
Yep.
I don't know if it's one public hearing or a lot of public hearings.
It is one public hearing.
But I move to continue it.
To July 23rd.
Yep.
Second.
Second by Deirdre. Motion by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See everyone next meeting. All right, next item is the Chelmsford Mall property, 265 and 279 Chelmsford Street, 20 Manhattan Street, and 3 Katrina Road. Thank you, sorry.
That's right, happens all the time.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Belansky. For the record, my name's Philip Iliopoulos, attorney here at Chelmsford, offices at 9 North Road. And I'm here on behalf of Wynn Stanley, the fairly new owners now of 265, 279 Chelmsford Street, the site commonly referred to as the Chelmsford Mall. Joined tonight by the principal of Wynn Stanley, Adam Wynn Stanley, also our engineer, Katie Edright. I'm not sure if Matthew Baker is here. Good. And as well as Vice President Linda Costanazo. Want to first thank the board for spending some time with us. It feels like now two or three months ago, we kind of presented it on an... It feels like now two or three months ago, we kind of presented it on an informal basis. For those maybe that are in attendance tonight, maybe hearing the project for the first time, thought I would just give a little background about Wynn Stanley Enterprises. They first became a part of this town when they purchased the old Marshall's Stop &amp; Shop building that had become a defunct property. Marshall's had left, then Stop &amp; Shop left, and it was sort of vacant maybe for 10 years. That site was really targeted by the town for economic redevelopment. And Adam bought it and did a phenomenal job with it, really, I think, turned it around. Actually got some new tenants in there recently. I've heard some good things about the barbecue. Got to try it. So that's become a very vibrant center. Really kind of enjoyed working with the town, looked for other opportunities, and bought the old Griss Mill property and created 11 Cushing Place on the other side of the, of the Chelmsford Center. And I think that project has worked out well. And again, was a site that was targeted by the town for redevelopment, especially for housing in the master plan. So again, Adam enjoyed working with the town, continued to look for opportunities for Chelmsford, and ended up buying the, the Chelmsford Mall. Chelmsford Mall was originally developed back in the early 1970s. I remember it because I used to love to go to Child World. That was like my favorite thing to do. And so people remember Child World, Bradley's, people probably still think of Bradley's there as well. Over the last 25 years, the mall, which was part interior mall, was renovated and became really now sort of a open-air configuration. So you've got a very kind of bigger users, very deep users in the, in that mall, and kind of got rid of the interior, separate small stores. You'll see when Katie comes up, the project, the plans for the mall, for the pad sites up front, and some, some changes that will enhance the landscaping, et cetera. You know, the other thing that we'll be kind of talking about more specifically is the two special permits that the project will require. First one is a special permit for fast casual restaurants that it's required if it's going to have a drive-through. So both of those pad sites will be seeking special permits for a drive-through. And we'll also seek a special permit to reduce off-street parking. You'll hear in the presentation, and you actually see it, at that mall, I don't even know if ever I've seen more than half the space is used up at one time. So that'll give us the opportunity to create some more landscaping, some pedestrian walkways, things of that nature. So that, to reduce that parking, that we don't think is needed for that site, which is really right now a sea of parking from the 70s, we, does require a special permit because technically would be less than what's required. So those are the two main special permits that we'd be seeking as part of the project. What I thought I could do before I bring Katie up to walk us through the plan is maybe have Adam, if he's willing to come up and just kind of reintroduce himself maybe to the community, talk a little bit about what he sees for the vision of this mall and why specifically we're looking to add some restaurant usage there.
Thank you, Phil. For the record, my name is Adam Wynn Stanley. I'm a principal of Wynn Stanley Enterprises. I know we spoke a couple of months ago about this particular property. You know, I've been a property owner here in Chelmsford since 2014 when we purchased the former Marshall's and Stop &amp; Shop property, which we, we have rehabbed it. And it's, it's been a great property. It's been full. We've recently had some tenant turnover with two tenants. Duncan and Andiamo did not renew their leases. And we have replaced those two tenants with pliables and the smoke shop barbecue. My office, my corporate office is in Concord, and my, my staff is throughout the region. So we're very much in regular communication with the town on property management. So we do all our own property management, facilities management. You know, we're really a, a long-term owner and part of this, this community. We went on and completed the Griss Mill project, which at the time was, if everyone remembers, it was basically was a closed-down lumberyard in the downtown that we built 32 condominium units and sold that, that project out about eight years ago. I like this town. I think it's a great town. It's a good town to work in and own properties in. We really have not found a project until we had the opportunity to, to buy the, the Chelmsford Mall. My plan with the Chelmsford Mall is going to be similar to Chelmsford Town Center. It's going to be long-term ownership. Our family, my family, we bought it with our own capital and so we don't have like an institutional partner that's going to require a sale or something like that. I think it's a, it's a great property, but it, it does need more investment. And we are, we've just started to implement phase-one improvements. So phase-one improvements, which are actually underway at the property now, we have started with power washing the entire center. And we are actually repainting the entire property with a whole new paint scheme to give it a kind of a fresher look. We are also upgrading all of the trash enclosures, which, you know, doesn't sound like a terribly great project, but a lot of the trash enclosures are 30-plus years old and they're kind of like banged up and don't look that great. We're also upgrading the signage at the property. We're going to be bringing in new LED signage. We're also making a number of EPIS and repairs to the exterior facade. So that's all kind of like in phase-one. The phase-two project, which Katie is going to be here to talk about tonight, is we, one of the most important things for all retail properties is, is food. And a lot of our tenants, especially Kohl's and as well as PetSmart, have said, "Hey, if there's an opportunity to, to bring food to the center, we think it would be a nice addition." And so right now, we are exploring the possibility of bringing two fast casual restaurants to the out parcels. We think that, as I stated last time when I was here, I'm not looking to do, I'm distinguishing between fast food and fast casual. So fast food would be, you know, like Burger King and Wendy's and, and things of that nature. I'm really thinking about, we're focusing on fast casual and more upscale-type restaurants. There's, there's lots of other choices that could go here. There could be banks and other things like that. But I think ultimately, I think upscale food users are really what is needed in this area. I think it would be beneficial for the property. And along with, with those improvements, we plan on creating new pedestrian accessways by connecting a new sidewalk from the street. We have landscaping improvements. We'd like to take some of our parking offline and increase the landscaping. And ultimately, I'd like to finish up with redoing the entire parking lot as well. That's in phase-two. We're going to start with phase-one, which is a pretty significant investment. And I think it's a great property, and we're interested in investing in it further to, to make it, you know, better for the next 30 years. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and explain my vision and, and what we'd like to do. I'm hoping that I can be judged by the, the work that we've done in town with our, our current projects. And even though the property is, you know, fully leased and performing well, we, we do believe that further investments could make this an even better property. So thank you for your consideration.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Unright, and I'm a professional engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. And my office is now at 100 Apollo Drive in Chelmsford. As Phil and Adam stated, I'm going to go over a little bit of information, but I also wanted to, I know that there's a significant amount of butters here tonight. Certainly, this is not the only meeting for this project. There will be significantly more meetings, I assume, after this evening. I'm going to give a 30,000-foot overview tonight. I would ask that if the planning board is looking to review the traffic study that was issued to the board, if possibly, if, if that needs to be peer-reviewed, if we could discuss that tonight after my presentation and set that up for an additional meeting. I know that there's a lot of concern relative to traffic, so maybe it might make sense for us to create a solely traffic kind of question meeting if the board feels that that's a topic for basically an evening in and of itself. So I fully intend on, on working through some of the basics tonight, but certainly if we could talk about that. Also, I know that not all peer reviews internally within the town of Chelmsford have been done yet either, related to things like stormwater. So I'm looking forward to working through with the departments in the, in the next few weeks prior to the, the upcoming meetings. So I wanted to sort of set the stage so that nobody thought we were one and done, that we were looking to get out of here tonight. I'm here also to make sure that once all of the questions are asked, certainly I will bring those back to my engineers, my traffic engineers and my team, and certainly Wynn Stanley Enterprises, to talk this through prior to the next meeting. This is a rendering of the existing conditions of the site. As Phil stated, built in 1974. I also frequented the, the interior mall as growing up. The site consists of five different parcels that Wynn Stanley purchased. So 265 and 279 Chelmsford Street, 20 Manaham, 3 Katrina, and then there's an unnumbered parcel on Katrina. The two on Katrina are essentially an old detention basin that captures all the stormwater from this site. So it's been flagged as a wetland. It would be considered a wetland today because it's prior to 1996. All the stormwater from the site goes to that area, the back of the mall. The five parcels total about 22 acres, so significant size of the site. Majority of the parcel is a shopping center district. So there's not too many of those in Chelmsford if you start to look around the map. There's two large areas in this part of Chelmsford. Shopping Center District is created in an area that is see significant traffic. So Route 110, Chelmsford Street, a lot of the zones along Chelmsford Street are just for that, are for businesses that see frequent, pass-by traffic and see a significant amount of traffic. So Route 110 is a state highway, also known as Chelmsford Street in front of the site. The site uses two different entrances. So there's a signalized intersection, which is the main entrance off of Chelmsford Street. And then there's a second entrance that's kind of over by Feng Shui that's a right-in, right-out entrance. And that's the way it's sort of been designed horizontally and signed at that other location. The site's also in the CEIOD, which is the Overlay District for Community Enhancement Investment Overlay. But we're not seeking any of those special permits related to dimensional standards or FAR or any of those requirements. So we didn't go through with the CEIOD type of permitting here. We're also in the Zone 2 Well-Hood Protection area, so we are in the Aquifer Protection District for the majority of the site. And we are, I need to fix a section of our report, we are considered a critical area because of that. The site itself, the mall, again, assessors say it was built in 1974. The mall itself is about 5.5 acres, so 242,000 square feet. There's over 1,000 parking spaces there today, and I think anyone who frequents the site notices there's a lot of empty spaces. The topography slopes away from Route 110, so the mall sits pretty significantly below Route 110, Chelmsford Street. It's about 21 feet below the road. So as you know, when you drive in, you drop down to the parking areas. And all the drainage essentially goes to catch basins right in front of the mall, and it goes around the mall to the back out to Katrina. There's a couple little places that it stops off in between. There's a low point behind 10, 12, and 14 Manaham, and there's a low point behind 271 Chelmsford Street where the water goes out, and then it gets picked back up and comes back through the parking lot. So we looked at three different design points when we were looking at the drainage here to make sure that we didn't increase any of the stormwater, any of the interim points What we're proposing is two fast casual restaurants. So if you can switch to the next, if you can switch to the overall slide, and then if I want to use the-
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Uh, go to the overall one first, and then we can break it out into the individual I'll just keep, I'll keep talking while Evan brings it up. There we go. This is the site redeveloped, so you can see there's significantly more green space. And essentially, those two upper parking lots, which are very rarely used, have been taken out. So those feel like, and we're considering them, pad sites. So essentially, when you, when you go to almost any mall, outdoor mall, you see most of these have what's called a pad site, or some small, some small restaurants or coffee in the front of the parcel. This did not have that. So we're looking at creating these two sites that would access the traffic off of Route 110, Chelmsford Street, and enter into these fast casual restaurants. We don't have tenants for either of these yet. I did submit a rendering of a Starbucks that we're working with to hopefully maybe think about that as the coffee, but we don't have any agreements with Starbucks at this point. And we don't have a user for the left site. So the 4,000-square-foot building, again, Adam and his team at Wynn Stanley are working with a bunch of different providers to fit that fast casual, more upscale restaurant with drive-through, but there's no deals that have been struck as of yet. So we don't have a ton of information about the architecture. But certainly, this is the first step to come before you and at least talk about the idea of having these restaurants there. Seek the special permits, understanding that once we have a user, we will have to talk to this board about the architecture and any changes to the site that we may need. But until we get these approvals, it's hard to sort of market those sites as being available for something like this. The proposed access for both of these restaurants is off the main driveway and the parking lot. So we had an earlier conceptual of this, that we brought this board a couple months ago. We also met with and had a department head meeting, an informal meeting, prior to doing the engineering design plans. And we received a lot of feedback from the fire department. And the fire department is typically someone we see first. To make sure that they're happy with the amount of access they have around the building, so we made some pretty significant changes to the site layouts based on the fire department's recommendations. And you can see in our package, we provided a fire turning plan that shows the Chelms, the largest Chelmsford fire truck and how it would move throughout this site. So the idea was that it could, it could get into the parking lots, but it could also get in that drive-through area. Also, what we looked at is some of the interactions that we had between the two restaurants. You're making sure that the entrance sat back from the signalized intersection, and then thinking a little bit about, you know, where those ins and outs were and making sure that there wasn't, like, reducing as much of that cross-traffic as possible. So you can see on the left side with the double drive-through there, we actually have people entering out into the parking lot at the very back of the Kohl's parking lot. What that allows is for us to separate that traffic out and to get it further away from the signal.
Can you just point that out?
Sure.
Yep. Right here. So this is the exit to the drive-through. It's way, yeah, please come up. It's hard to see. I don't know if it's on. Oh, it's on this screen too. I can point here. I can point here too. It comes here. This is the out.
Yep, me too.
So the out, and people would be directed to come out and go this way. So the drive-through board and pickup is actually way, is on this side of the building, the north side of the building, but this drops down from Chelmsford Street. I think it's about six or seven feet depressed. So it's down lower. Here. No, 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 but that's what we're proposing the grading to be, about that far down. And then people come around the building and you come up here and rejoin the traffic here.
Katie, could you come up to, Katie, could you come up to the microphone?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
I can't do both at the same time. Yeah, I'd be happy to point out additional information. So as part of this project too, what we're looking at, and we talked to the board about this previously, but a lot of times when I get the chance to look at a parking lot that was striped so long ago, is looking at zoning and figuring out if there's excess pavement. There is excess pavement here. So what Wynn Stanley allowed me to do was look at a restriping plan. So this is a new striping layout, which between the two restaurants and the restriping layout, we've removed a little over 17,000 square feet of pavement from the site, which is pretty- from the site, which is pretty significant reduction in pavement. It also allows that pedestrian access. So currently, there's no way to get from Chelmsford Street into the site if you're walking on Chelmsford Street. So one of the things that we looked at was connecting pedestrian connectivity between both of these restaurants, so people can come off of Chelmsford Street. It's graded to meet the ADA standards. That's why it's kind of off a little bit to the sides, not right along the road, to make sure that we meet that less than 5% slope. Comes into the site, allows you to connect to both restaurants, and then connect down through some crosswalks and some new signage and some new stop bars to follow that existing driveway down and actually meet with the mall. So now there's a way for people to get from Chelmsford Street to the mall, walking in a safe way. That doesn't exist there today, so we created that. Instead of having that parking along Kohl's and Best Fitness, being able to be accessed by both sides, I don't know how many times I've been there, when somebody is trying to get into a spot one side and the other side at the same time, we closed that off so that it is just an in-and-out, so you don't have cars backing into the main access aisle. You have to go around and enter the parking lot. This allows us to create that pedestrian walkway and connect all of those parcels. We also, if you look at this plan, we added significant amount of stop bars and stop signage so that there's better traffic flow, and also changed sort of that intersection of the, the back edge of that parking lot with the main drive aisle, too, to make it less open. Right now, it's really difficult to determine sort of what side you're on because there's such a mass of pavement right when you get to the bottom of the hill to take a left as to which way you're going. So we've really kind of enclosed that. We also looked at, again, reducing impervious, but these two new pad sites out front, also, we designed those to meet stormwater. So not only are we reducing the site by almost over 17,000 square feet of pavement, we're also taking the new pavement that's replacing the old pavement on these two pad sites and running those through best management practices and meeting redevelopment standards. So all of those new parking lots are going to run through deep sun-potted catch basins with an operation and maintenance plan, and then to an underground infiltration area. So we went out and did soil testing in both of those areas, and we've provided more infiltration that is required under the stormwater management by law, which also then significantly reduces the amount of water that's going to that pond at Katrina, which eventually ends up in, I think it's River Meadow Brook there, behind the site on the other side of Katrina. My mouth is really dry now. I was drinking water out in the lobby. The proposed number of spaces, we're supposed to have per zoning 986 spaces. We have 1,008 there. We're proposing 797. We did provide a parking study, and you'll see that the most number of spaces that we counted that are used, I believe, was 286 used spaces. Now, certainly, that's dependent on who these tenants are. And so currently, the way that the site is used, we're, we have a significant amount of access, of excess parking here for the tenant mix that's there today. But what we did do was make sure that each of these pad sites more than meets zoning with the requirement for what we anticipate the space for patrons would be on both of these restaurants, to make sure that both of these pad sites has more than required per zoning adjacent to them. The left pad requiring 53, we have 64, and the right requiring 30, we have 35. We also provided that, and I think this was one of the board's suggestions earlier, a pedestrian connection to get from that left-side restaurant down into the main parking lot. So if there's the need for overflow, now you can do that. You can park down there, and you can get right up into that restaurant and get on the pedestrian access. So that was a good suggestion that we included in our plans. Again, our drainage system has been designed to clean the stormwater and to infiltrate, so we're dealing with phosphorus and our TSS removal and meeting our requirement for recharge up there on both those sites. Landscaping, we have a significant landscape plan. We brought back Lorraine Black. I don't know if, some of you might remember Lorraine. She was finally able to come back to private land development after, after leaving her job and going back on her own. So Lorraine did this plan. She's a fantastic landscape architect out of Groton, Massachusetts. Used to do a lot of our landscape designs, but really looked at these frontage parcels, and if you drive by there today, there's kind of some sad-looking trees out front and not much else. It's really some bark mulch and some lawn. The proposed landscape plan adds 45 shade trees, 19 evergreen trees, and 354 shrubs. So very significant upgrade to this frontage along the road. And I want to mention also that both of these sites, I started to talk about it a little bit, but I was away from the microphone, are both depressed, so headlights are not an issue to those across the street. Everything is three to four feet down from the road, if not more, in both of those areas. So there's one area on the right pad that we have parking facing towards the road. That's right into a three-to-four-foot wall. So really looking at that and also adding significant landscaping along both those frontages, taking out all of the bark mulch areas and creating areas for lawn and vegetation for both of those sites. And then lighting, we also prepared a photometric plan for the lighting. There are new light poles. We aren't doing anything with the existing light poles. As of right now, we've accommodated them in our new striping plan, but new proposed lighting up in both of these sites, certainly fully compliant. 20-foot poles are proposed there with 12-foot height along the sides of the buildings, cutoff, full cutoff fixtures, dark sky compliant. The photometric plan has been done so that you can see the spillage, that it stays on the property, and that was prepared as part of the site plan package. And then I know the hot button issue is really traffic here. I'm just gonna not gloss over it, but hit sort of the major points, because certainly, as I stated before, I would assume that the, the planning board is gonna look for a peer review. Please let us know if that's not the case. But what I would like to do is have the report peer-reviewed, have the peer reviewer and my traffic engineer with Howard Stein Hudson be able to be here and answer the questions of the abutters relative to specifics of the traffic study. Certainly, any questions related to traffic I'll take down tonight. I did receive a letter through the planning board that was, that requested some information about traffic, and I will include that in any response that we create for the study. But we reached out to the town prior to doing this study. We reached out to both Evan and the Engineering DPW office to determine what we were gonna study and came up with a plan as to what we were gonna study. And that's where these intersections came from. I also can tell you, I worked on Turnpike Road prior to moving to Apollo Drive, and I drive this twice a day, every day. We studied Chelmsford Street at the signalized entry. We studied Chelmsford Street at the alternative entry at the intersection with Dalton. We studied Chelmsford Street with Glen Ave and the, I'm gonna call it the Market Basket Light, because that's what we know it as. Chelmsford Street and Route 3 and the Stop and Shop Light. Chelmsford Street, Stedman at Golden Cove, that intersection, and also Dalton, Stedman, and Subway, which is the intersection that's sort of one-up as you get into the Westlands. And that was based on a conversation that we had, which is, which is very typical traffic engineers talking with planning staff, talking with the DPW staff to determine where those intersections were that needed to be studied. So what we looked at for both of, for each of these was we looked at one as a fast-food with drive-through and one as a coffee with drive-through based on ITE, which is the Engineering Handbook to Look at the Traffic for this Area. And we had counters down. 14,000 cars a day use Chelmsford Street. That's both directions during the day and 12,000 on the weekends. The traffic for this, we conservatively looked at this as if both were fast casual restaurants, not coffee, as far as pass-by traffic, because it's more conservative. So a fast-food restaurant, you assign a 50% pass-by, meaning people are gonna be on the road already. Whatever is here, they're gonna stop in and grab something. Not a lot, only 50% of the people are gonna be going here on purpose to get food. With coffee, it's anywhere between 90 and 98% pass-by. So nobody's going out of their way to get coffee. They're stopping in and stopping out. And so what we looked at was peak AM and peak PM. Peak AM is 7:45 to 8:45. It's a peak hour of when people see traffic, well, when traffic is on the roads, and 4:30 to 5:30 in the evening. And then Saturday, that peak hour is 11:45 to 12:45. And so speeds actually on Chelmsford Street range between about 25 to 33 miles per hour, too. So just as a, as an aside. Again, we looked at it as if both restaurants were 50% pass-by. So although we're saying that these two restaurants create 3,000 average daily trips, we're considering, based on the report, that half of those are people already on the road. And honestly, more than that really is what's realistic for what happens there. So about 1,500 is what we included in the report as new cars or new traffic. And certainly, the report is very large, and there's a lot of numbers and a lot of text, and Carrie Pike, my professional engineer, who worked on the study, love to have the opportunity for her to come in here and let you quiz her on every number within that study at a further meeting. Besides that, we also did parking, not that we needed to, but we did do a parking study and went out there and counted cars during different times of the day, during the week, and on a Saturday. And again, we only saw 286 spaces being used at, at the most in this lot. With that, I did get an opportunity to read through the comments that were posted earlier today. I do have, I did request a meeting with DPW to possibly go through the stormwater and give them the Cliff Notes version of, of what we looked at and how we went through it to help them hopefully with their review of the stormwater. I'd like to get the peer review set up for traffic if need be. And then we do have a, a call with Mast dot informally. We can't go to Mast dot with anything until we have a permit, but informally, a meeting with them in the next, I believe it's two weeks from now, just to kind of talk about what we're proposing to do and just get their initial feedback so that we can have the best project possible before they see us formally.
If you can ask them if they can help us fix the traffic on 110. Maybe you have better influence than the rest of us here.
With that, I don't know if anybody has anything else to offer from my team, but I will, we want to hear all of your comments and certainly the public's comments tonight, so I'll be taking notes and go from there.
Okay. Thank you. Evan, before we get into the letters, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I would just say, to Katie's point, if the goal collectively before we adjourn this evening is to decide on the traffic peer review, I think it would be worthwhile for the board to try to articulate specific areas of concern or interest. We've done that with Hildreth. As it pertains to the applicant's meeting with Mast dot along the same vein Anita just mentioned, if the board, it may be premature, but if the board has ideas or interests related to this project and how this project may benefit or improve or mitigate the conditions, as I said, it may be premature without the traffic peer review and that discussion taking place, but it may be worthwhile for the board to ask Katie Mast dot's insights related to this project, as well as some of their other improvement projects that they have going on on Chelmsford Street. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thanks. Would you like to read the letters?
Okay, so the first one is from Public Health Director Donna Greenwood to the Planning Board dated July 1, 2025. This letter is regarding the proposed project, the Chelmsford Mall property at 265, 279 Chelmsford Street, 20 Mannahan Street, and 3 Katrina Road to construct two fast casual restaurants with drive-throughs and associated site improvements. The proposed project has property in Town Water Resources, Hyalufa Protection Zone Two, and the State Water Resource Protection Zone Two Wellhead Protection Area. Therefore, this project would require approval from the Board of Health pursuant to the Town of Chelmsford general provisions and applicable state laws. Upon approval from the Board of Health regarding the Town of Chelmsford general provisions regarding Chapter 201 of the Board of Health, if this property is not able to connect to the town sewer system, it would then require an onsite septic system, and that onsite septic system must meet Title V regulations pursuant to state regulations and would be subject to the Health Department's permit application and inspection process. The proposed project has plans for kitchen facilities that would need, need to meet the state sanitary code, minimum standards for food establishments. This project must also meet the Town of Chelmsford provisions, Board of Health regulations for food service and retail food establishment for each facility, and the applicant would need to complete a food establishment plan review and submit full-stamped architect plans for review for each facility. Once the Health Department approves these plans, they would then apply for food establishment permit. Also, the property must meet Town of Chelmsford general, general provisions regarding a refuse dumpster collection area. Next one, from the Public, Department of Public Works, dated July 8, 2025. The Engineering Department received site plans for 265 Chelmsford Street. This is insufficient time to review, given the complexity of the application. They then list several documents that were received. It says preliminary comments issued not addressed. No sewer calculations were submitted. Applicant must submit Title V sewer use calculations for the proposed restaurants. Town of Chelmsford sewer restriction, bank policy, and sewer flow purchase through INI need to be verified for approval. Provide cut-and-fill calculations. Due to staffing and time restraints, DPW is recommending the following to be peer-reviewed: traffic impact assessment and stormwater calculations. For clarification, DPW will review sewer flow and sewer calculations once submitted. DPW will include permitting requirements, pre-construction, construction, construction oversight, and other comments recommended for approval. It is assumed the Planning Board will review the submitted sustainability checklist. Then we have a letter from the Fire Prevention Office from Captain Josh Abbott dated July 7, 2025. Members of the Board regarding the special permit for this property, this office provides the following comments and conditions. All constructions shall comply with all applicable codes, including but not limited to the Mass State Building Code, Massachusetts CMRs, Massachusetts general laws, NFPA standards, and Town of Chelmsford bylaws. Plans will be reviewed by this office as part of the building process. Site access is considered adequate based on the submitted truck turning plans. Any changes to the site will require updated truck turning plans to demonstrate continued adequate access. Curbs on the site should be slope granite or mountable in style. No bark mulch shall be used on-site for landscaping. Alternative non-flammable materials approved by the Fire Department shall be used. I respectfully request this letter and these conditions be incorporated into the decision-making process and made part of the public record. And then we have from the Building Commissioner. This letter is dated July 7. Dear applicant, should the proposed fast casual restaurant with drive-throughs and parking improvements are approved by the Planning Board, be advised that parking, restrooms, dining tables, counters, doors, curbs, and sidewalks need to comply with ADA requirements and the 521 CMR code. It is also recommended to install an ADA pushbar door opener outside and inside the main doors to facilitate ease of door opening, operating force. Also, you need to meet building coverage, FAR, and setback is deemed necessary per zoning bylaws. Respectfully, Jose Negrón, Building Commissioner. And then we have three letters stating no concerns from the Chelmsford Police Department, Chelmsford Water District, and the Treasurer Collector's Office.
All right, thank you. All right. We're gonna do a couple rounds of comments and questions from the board. To keep it easy to follow, I want to do, any questions or concerns first on the use and site plan, and then we'll do another round for specific traffic after. Okay? Mike, site and use first.
I don't have any particular concerns with a basic site plan. I think the traffic is more interesting. We'll get to that next round.
John? John?
I don't have any site plan questions at this time.
Anita?
So I saw the rendering of the Starbucks. Not a big fan of, and I don't know if that's just an example of it. And I mentioned this in the prior meeting. The Joan of Arc, we've got the Joan of Arc building right next to the Chumsford Mall. I love that building, right? It looks like a colonial house. It fits. This is a gateway into the town. We have homes on the other side. And I, you know, if it's Starbucks, I know Starbucks has done things in colonial-style homes. I'd like it to look, since we're adding landscaping, that it almost looks like a village, a neighborhood, like I want to, again, I'll point to when we get to that, like I'm just not, this is too modern for the, for the Westlands to me. And I know, I'll let your architects, where'd Katie go? There you are, okay. I'll let your architects design something, but for me, if you want my approval, it has to look nice and add value to the neighborhood and to the town. Like I'm a lot about, you know, traffic is traffic, like fourteen thousand cars on this road. You can't, like, the fact that you even have it going at thirty-three miles an hour, I'm shocked because usually on this road, we're going five miles an hour.
Anita, traffic second.
I know, I know, so, okay, sorry. Okay. But I like the, you know, I like the developer, I like his restaurants that he's brought into this town. You know, I've heard great things about the Smokehouse that replaced N Diamo's. You know, I look forward to having more unique type restaurant, like coffee shops. You know, big fan of Cafe Nero versus a Starbucks, but I'll let you put my plug in there. But other than that, again, for me, it's more about how this looks. If we're going to put something up there and just making sure the lights, especially the, I like the, the left-hand side because it's all, all the parking's in the back, but you do have those cars on the right-hand side that are parking facing the street.
Into a wall.
Into a wall.
Into a wall, yeah. Yeah, I, I would want to see like an elevation for that. Or maybe making.
Looks like there's some plants maybe on top of that wall, too.
Oh, yeah, I know, but like make it wider or some, like, I'm sure, I'm sure people will complain, will get to that, so I won't say anything. I'll let it, that's it, that's all I have to say.
Deirdre?
I really like the accessibility for the pedestrians, you know, from the pad sites down to the main parking lot in the, in the main mall area. I like the fact that you've increased the green space and, you know, really looks like had an, had an eye towards minimizing the view shed from the street of the lights or the parking and all that. I really appreciate that. I, I brought this up at the last time, and I can't remember what was said frankly, but I would love it if there was some way to have accessibility somehow from the bike trail. I don't know what that would look like. I don't know if you just have some pref, traffic calming measure or have a bike trail along the side, and I wouldn't necessarily want that to detract from the, from the green area. But, I mean, I think the bike trail is a asset to the community and the neighborhood and the town. And, you know, if you're going to have people right there riding their bikes, they're going to go into this parking lot and go eat, stop for dinner or a snack. And it would be nice if that could be done safely somehow. That's all I have.
Marcy?
Two quick things. First of all, Seretha and I have both talked beforehand. We're not seeing anything on here for snow storage. Where is that going to be, especially with, you know, the two of our lots?
It's on one of the sheets.
We were struggling finding it, so.
C six.
C six.
Dotted areas or dashed areas.
Could maybe Katie just come up and point out?
We can add some additional lines, too. But it's these areas here. And they're specifically in these areas to avoid landscaping and certain slopes, so. These dark dash dots.
Okay.
Areas.
All right, and my other quick question with this, so on the right-hand side, where right now you're proposing the coffee shop, and the plan I'm looking at where you guys had green space, like coming around where the entrance to drive-in is, you also have it listed as the dumpster pad. No, see, it's.
There's one on each side. There's one here that comes in from this area.
So the dumpster pad's going to be over there?
Here.
Because on one of them, it's got it down on the bottom.
This is the one for the other restaurant.
The label's there, but it's pointing to the right. You can't, it's hard to see the arrow.
Oh, okay, there's the, all right.
Yep.
Thank you. Nope. Perfect. Yes, there's so many arrows in that one area, that's why I'm like, wait a minute, is that?
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Seretha?
So I guess I have a couple of questions. Is this going to the Conservation Committee because of the adjacent to the wetlands and stuff?
They're starting their NOI next meeting.
Okay, because one of the things I did notice is that right pad is going into the wetland buffer area. And on one of them, it looks pretty close to the no pave zone. So I was kind of curious what areas that you're disturbing with any of the wetlands around on this project from doing the construction. So, like, it's not totally clear to me, so I don't know if Katie can point those out at some point, but I'd like to understand, like, what's being disturbed on there.
Sure, and one thing that might, I'm sorry, would you like me to answer, Mr. Chair? Can I stand here? Can you think they can hear me through? Oh, that's right, I forgot about that one. So one of the things that might be helpful is for me to show you where the existing pavement is versus where the proposed pavement is, which we'll have ready for the Conservation Commission, bring that back. But, no, that was a good one to be on. That was a good one. I was getting ready to point, and you moved. So.
Which one?
Go back up. This one is better because this is, most of the proposed improvements are here. So the area that's essentially drainage behind ten, twelve, and fourteen Mannahan, there's a, there's an area that's considered wetland in that, those backyards, basically because it takes drainage and then the drainage comes out and comes back into our parking lot. But that is a buffer zone, and this is the hundred-foot buffer zone around that. What I can show you is sort of the pre to post, too, because we're further away. We're either on or further away than the existing pavement is in those areas today. And we're also doing better with stormwater, and there's less pavement in those buffers. So the other buffer on the property.
Because there's one to the right and then there's one further down.
Is behind two seventy-one, so there's another, again, it's a drainage. Basically, it goes, it goes down and then goes back up to the existing parking lot, and there's water that goes into there, and then the water gets picked up and goes back onto the parking lot. Because it's so old, it's a wetland. So if it's pre-ninety-six, it doesn't matter if it was stormwater, it's still a wetland. So this is a buffer zone off of that wetland that exists behind the home that's next to us, so. Those are the two areas that we're doing work in. And then the pond that's on Katrina, we're outside of all those buffers with proposed work, but that's also considered a wetland.
So the areas that are kind of adjacent to the wetlands that you're kind of disturbing is the one on the left and then the one on the right?
Is here and here, right? Yep.
Okay. The other thing is the parking up at the top. Is there a door on the side of the building over there that's on the side of the drive-through? Like, people that are parking up there, how are they getting in to the facility?
Well, so I don't know yet, but I can add a walkway for right now because we don't have the exact building. But the idea would be that maybe employees would park over there and walk in through the side rather than having these basically be the main area for the customers to enter through the side door. But I could certainly add that.
Yeah, I was just thinking for safety reasons, having people cross. Let me see. I don't know, I'm sure I'll have more to go along. Those are kind of like my first ones.
All right. I've got a few questions. Katie, the exit ramp on the left that you mentioned going down, is that going to be the exit for the drive-through and the parking lot or just the drive-through?
Well, it could be both. So I don't have it blocked off here for a continuation of flow, but this is both ways, in and out. So it's not the only way. You could come to the stop bar here and take a left and follow the cars leaving the drive-through out to the main parking lot.
Well, what, what would be preventing people from coming in, through the drive-through and then taking a left? Is there anything preventing them, signage?
No, there'll be signage and stuff there, and I think this is actually, would be an easier path than cutting through this parking lot. But, and there will be signage there, but there won't be any impediment to them doing that if they wanted to.
The snow storage up in that top-left pad site near that stop sign, I would prefer that be moved so that it doesn't impede any.
Site distance.
Site distance. The other thing is the, I like the pedestrian sidewalk on the left side. Is there a way to get one onto the right site as well? Because having people walk all the way across to go back around.
Too much topography.
Okay.
So we started looking at both sides. We could look at it again, but my guess is it would be so long that people would rather go the other way because we're, we're trying to lose so much topography that you would start thinking about making it above five percent and needing to rail it.
Switchbacks.
And switchbacks.
Or stairs.
We tried really hard for access, like if we were going to, I don't really like to connect things that aren't accessible unless I have to, like this location here. But, I mean, there, there could be another pedestrian way to get up there through stairs and stuff. But it just, it couldn't be, I couldn't grade it to be ADA without making it incredibly long.
I'm just a little concerned that people are not going to go, if they're going, if they want to go to that right site from the right side, they're not going to go all the way across that intersection just to go back again. They're going to try and find cut-throughs.
See if there's a way to, right, no, I know what you mean, too, because then it'll, the grass will get killed and.
Yeah.
Or they'll walk in the street.
Let me, yeah, let me look, let me look at that. I don't, it just wouldn't be able to be graded to be accessible.
So if we could, could have one, like that initial one be the accessibility and then do a side one with have, like, just stairs or something? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we might just have to, we'll have to figure out how to sign it. I just want to make sure, I'll have to read through the manuals again, make sure it needs all the requirements.
And I just want to clarify, because I think you were pointing in the wrong spot just then.
I'm.
Yeah, I'm actually looking from the street to that pad site. Because if people are walking on Chumsford Street from the right side of that map.
Yeah, they'd have to cross all the way over.
Yeah, let me talk to.
Okay.
Let me examine that a little bit further. Okay, I was thinking the other direction.
Do you need one the other way, like from the bottom up? To access, access that?
I think it would be less of an issue, but I could see, my biggest issue is going to and from that pad site from the right side of that map.
We can, we can definitely look at it more.
People will park everywhere.
People will cut through.
Yeah, I mean, if you can get a safer walkway through on both sides, it makes sense.
And then I think someone mentioned it earlier, but if you can also provide an elevation for that parking area just to show what it would be like.
An elevation or do you think a profile would be, like a cut sheet that shows?
Yeah, that cut sheet. And then as you're thinking about the clients getting some additional information about delivery truck hours, hours of operation, the monument sign lighting as well, because that's right at the neighbor's area. Those would be things that we, I think we would want to look at. All right, I think that's it for the site plan. All right, any other questions or comments on the site plan, and then we'll move to the traffic?
Is there a way that you could estimate how much additional tax revenue we could expect from the town?
Could ask John. Maybe John knows.
I mean, unfortunately, we don't receive, we, we receive quarterly meals tax distributions. Are you talking property taxes?
Meals tax.
Meals tax, we just receive a quarterly distribution from the Commonwealth, but it doesn't break it out by restaurants.
Oh, so we don't get our, like, we don't have our.
We would be able to, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go for it.
We would be able to give you an estimate of probably the real estate taxes, plus look at some sales data for like a fast casual, different kind of categories, come up with what the sales tax would be for the town as well. So I think we could come up with some decent estimates.
Yeah, I like to understand that.
Yep, we could definitely do that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Katie, I'd had one more question, actually. The pedestrian crosswalk at that light at the entrance, is there going to be strip, pedestrians striping there?
It's going to depend on a meeting with Mast dot.
Okay.
So we're going to talk to them about the pedestrian improvements and whatever is necessary along the road.
I, yeah, I was thinking across your driveway area.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're going to work with them on what that, those details look like.
All right. All right, moving on to traffic. Mike? Can you move your mic, please?
Sorry.
I can, I'll take it back. Yeah, obviously, we're going to do a peer review on this. Everybody's assuming that, and we should probably just get that out of the way and get that started. That is one of the highest traffic areas in town, and which in some way, and, and given its location, I, it's probably no reason why it shouldn't stay that way. That's where the traffic will be. We probably ought to have some idea of how much more traffic we might want to, we would be comfortable with. I suspect with fourteen thousand cars going through there, the effect of this isn't going to be huge from a percentage point of view. But we should probably have some idea of what our, what our limits might be. That's about it for now. I think we have to see what the peer review comes up with.
Okay, thanks. John?
Just a general, something I would like to see looked at is just when the, so when the cars are exiting both of the fast food sites and they're trying to go back, you know, to exit, exit the plaza or, you know, just to look at when, so when the light is letting all of the cars in, would there be a problem with cars trying to exit out, or could that be coordinated somehow?
The other entrance, are we keeping that?
We are keeping that right in and right out.
Yeah, I mean, other than that this is.
Yeah.
It is, you know, it's one-ten, right, like, I mean, like, I avoided, like, the plaque. I, like. Yeah. I tried avoided at all costs.
I understand why.
As I can, because it. But I do understand and do realize that there's a potential for picking up extra revenue because people are going to be stuck on that road anyways and they want to grab a coffee, then, you know, might as well take advantage of that and help pay for, you know, some of our schools or safety or the town needs. Yeah, I'd be curious to see what the, what you guys, I, if you guys can, are speaking to the Department of Transportation about addressing this whole area, like what they can do to fix the traffic. I mean, in general, I mean, I don't know if there's, Chelmsford has such a big traffic problem to begin with.
There may be a solution here that goes well beyond the existing conditions.
Unfortunately, this is a state road. It's not even our own, like, it's not even a town road that we can address. And then the other thing, I'd just, you know, be cognizant of the cut through to Studdman from. This, is it, no, you know, like, you know, like, you're like. It's Dalton that, like, that I always take.
Please, folks, please, you will have a chance to address this.
If there's any suggestion for. If there's any suggestion for, like, re, I don't know, like, one-waying certain things, or, I don't know, if they have any suggestions to prevent.
Yeah.
People taking that cut through.
For traffic calming.
For traffic. I know, like, there's some roads you can't go in.
Certain hours.
Certain hours or something like that. If there's something regarding that, maybe you look at from a traffic study perspective, that little neighborhood in particular.
All right, Deirdre?
I agree with Anita, and we're gonna have the public input in a little bit. We're having a conversation amongst ourselves still at this moment, if you don't mind. I agree with Anita about looking at ways to protect the neighborhood from additional traffic cutthroughs, whether that's traffic calming or one-way streets, I don't know. Also, we had this prior controversial project where it was brought up by the applicant that there was an opportunity to improve the light timing and that that would help mitigate some of the traffic, where this isn't a town road. Maybe if you could bring that up.
We actually studied that, and it's in the traffic study. We actually looked at that.
Were you able to find?
It wasn't, no, that actually the retiming of it wasn't gonna change the results. So, but I wanted you to know, we could talk more about that certainly in the traffic evening, but we did look at the timing of the signal, too.
Okay, and then, yeah, I think that's all I have.
Marcy?
Oh, and we definitely need peer review.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Don't worry. So my only really big concern, I think, with traffic actually just happens to be in the, the parking lot in of itself, is you get your entrance and exits to both those fast casuals, it looks like they're directly across from each other, and I can see that becoming an issue. That's why I liked what Chris asked, that part, if for the larger lot, if you're gonna send everybody out down through the main parking lot to exit, which could potentially prevent some issues of people coming in and out at the same junction point. So.
Yeah, no, we could look at possibly signing that one way also, even though it's might be wide enough for 90-degree traffic, maybe it's an in-only on the left and an out on the other side.
Well, just 'cause thinking too, like, that's the main road that everybody's going to pretty much use to get into the Chelmsford Mall area. That's gonna be where one of your biggest congestion areas is, now that you're gonna have two restaurants and people trying to get out.
Yeah, we can study that further.
Sarita?
I guess a few things. I'm a little bit concerned with queue, so I don't know what the amount of cars that can sit within this area. One of my concerns happens, like, I think of other restaurants that are drive-throughs, like, you know, Starbucks, right? Like, an example is the one that's up by Kohl's in New Hampshire off exit six. The queue gets so backed up there that it prevents traffic from getting to where it needs to go. So a little bit of concern here with that. So just understanding what that might look like, because it's hard to tell from the drawing how many cars could fit in the queue.
And I can show you, and we do have, I'm familiar with that Starbucks also, we have significant queues on this project, but I can show cars on the plan also that might just help.
It might help the, you know.
It might help understand, but there are significant queues here, and I can, I can map that out for you.
And I do like the idea a little bit of talking about the one-way out, because it does force the traffic to kind of go another direction on the one on the left. But I guess that's my big thing right now on this, is more the queue within, within this parking lot, just causing blocks for people trying to get to where they need to go.
Oh, yeah, because it looks like the small lot with the coffee, it's got a longer queue than.
The other one has a double, but.
Yeah, it's got a double, so that should, but again.
And it also depends on who they actually have for tenants.
Right, so they have in there and how popular they are.
And whether or not they, these tenants actually do materialize, if it's a different type of tenant that.
Well, the other thing I think of is like Prest, right? Prest is there, and when that's really busy, that queue also backs up. They have people out there taking orders, trying to facilitate people, and then they park them in spaces while delivering their orders. Like, I don't know if these type of things have any, do they have any parking for mobile, like the pickup? I mean, like, if something like that, like Prest sits them behind there. I've been to other restaurants where they have a couple designated spaces for pickup after you go through the drive-through to help try to make it go through for a longer order.
Like, even if it's a restaurant, right, like, if you want to do mobile orders, mobile pickup, right, not, like, if it's even like a casual restaurant, like, someone's coming home, they're stuck on traffic, want to pick up dinner, that might be, again, depending on what the tenants are, something like that may be necessary for mobile pickups.
Okay. All right. So for my comments, I definitely, we're going to be doing a, a peer review on this. I would like to include all of those cut-through streets in the study as well. I think Subway, Sylvan, Sunset, Seneca, and Mannahan.
Dalton.
Dalton's already included.
Yeah.
But I think all of those intersections should be included in the study. I think with the traffic already there and potential cut-throughs, I think it's important to include those. I think the traffic study, if you can include the internal driveway area and the traffic patterns in there, that would be good, too, related to how it might impact that intersection, the main intersection. I also have some concerns about when the traffic study was done, Thursday, May 15th through Saturday, May 17th. It's the end of the week, and people usually work at home on Fridays. So I'd like to see that extended to Tuesday or Wednesday.
It was a Thursday and a Saturday, and if I may, I just want to make a couple of comments. I would really like the peer review engineer to provide their first peer review before adding scope to the project, only because there's reasons behind what we studied and why we studied it, and here, and to be able to collectively do any changes to the study after we hear both the board's comments, DPW's comments, and the peer review engineer's comments.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's how we've usually handled it in the past when I've been on this board, is we provide our concerns to the peer reviewer, they address, and then it could get redone. So Evan, if you can include those as part of the peer review. And then, while I appreciate the transportation performance management part of this, the fact that these are fast casual drive-through restaurants, it, those, I don't see a significant impact in reducing much of anything, unfortunately.
Those would be property-related, so I should clarify that. But that would be property-related and not just for these two restaurants.
Okay.
So we could talk about, right.
So it include, it would include the mall?
It would be property-wide.
Okay, good. That's, that's better. And then, the other question I had is the DOT plans for the ramps, that should also factor in to this study as well, in some way.
I'm fairly certain that Howard Stein-Hudson's aware. I don't know to what extent they're able to model the future improvements. My understanding is that that's a MassDOT project, and it's not even a 25% design, and it wouldn't be constructed until sometime in, you know, the 2030s, early 2030s. So it's, it's worthwhile bringing up. I just don't know to what extent they're gonna be able to, if there's enough data to, to model anything. Presum- presumably, whatever MassDOT is intending on doing is to make improvements, but this project could be, theoretically, could be approved and built before that's even.
Yeah.
But it's, I understand what you're saying. It's worth introducing it to make sure that the peer review consultant is aware. Do you know to what extent your, your study?
I, I know that they're aware that it's going to exist, but whether or not, again, whether or not there's information that would allow for us to work on something that we're looking at today versus then, but we can certainly talk to them about it, too.
Thank you. All right, that's all I had on the traffic study.
So on the, on the peer review, we've used Beta and Vanessa. Any preferences?
Vanessa's been pretty good in the past, I think.
Any conflicts that we're aware of?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll reach out to Vanessa. If for some reason they're not available, I'll switch to Beta.
Okay.
I feel like they've both been excellent.
The other question I had is DPW asked us to do a stormwater peer review as well?
Yeah, so today, I've had conversations, and you heard Katie mention as well. I think the preference is, or DPW indicated, their follow-up, their indication was, it would likely be meeting in August, that they would be able to do a full review. My sense is that Katie and the applicant are, understand that timeline and are okay with that timeline. A peer review would likely be the same timeline. Editorally, I think it's in everyone's best interest to always have DPW do the review if they technically are able to do the review. I think it's more valuable for the board and for the community to hear directly from DPW. So I think that's how this will play out, is DPW ultimately end up doing the, the peer review.
Okay. And I'm assuming Concom would also be.
Yeah, yeah.
Interested in that. Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
I have one more comment. I don't even know where this would fall in. But any noise impact? We, like, where would we even measure that?
So we're, we're still talking to the board. We don't know what these restaurants are gonna be, but certainly we can, there's a noise ordinance. They're parking lots now. We know that they'll be parking cars thereafter. Certainly any equipment that we have related to a restaurant, we can talk about. It would have to certainly meet the noise ordinance, and we'd have to talk about what those individual units might be once we know more. So.
I mean, again, just being cognizant that there'll be traffic now higher up.
Well, there's technically parking there that's usable today, just because it's not used. It, it's technically parking there today and traffic there today. So the, but the idea would be yes, that we would, certainly once we knew who these tenants might be, we'd have to come back before you with information related to that site-specific.
Okay. I mean, again, there's 14,000 cars on there.
But understood.
Road anyways.
There's still, there's noise, like fans and exhausts and everything else.
I also had a few questions on the sustainability side of things. Would it be also possible to include maybe some EV charging stations in the main lot?
I think they're required by code at this point.
We can discuss that and look at the code requirements.
And then, the stormwater changes only, the stormwater plans only for the upper lot, right? You're not changing anything on the lower lots.
Right, nope, the others are staying the same.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, before we go to the public comments?
Did you, did you say something, Katie, that you think the number, the amount of stormwater will be significantly reduced by the recharge during the?
Well, between the recharge and 17,000 square feet of pavement going away.
Right, right.
So the, the combination of both of those, of putting stormwater back into the ground on both the upper sites and then taking away that pavement, you can see the reductions in our storm events in the report that show both the flow rate and the volume of storm water going to that, going to each of the individual areas, which eventually go to the back.
And, I mean, can some of this green space be meant to, you know, like a rain garden kind of space?
Most of these areas are very sloped. Yes. We tried to, we tried to limit the amount of retaining walls as much as possible based on the topography that's out there, and try to keep them all below four feet all the way around the site, which was.
Complicated.
Difficult to do. So we tried to capture as much of the impervious areas from those upper two lots as possible and send those through our BMPs and infiltration.
Anything else from the board? All right. We'll now open it up to the public for comment.
Hi, my name is Sarah Holdway. I live at 21 Mannahan, so I abut 20 Mannahan, and I live down by the bike path. So Anita, I think, I really appreciate your commentary around the look and feel of what we're gonna put in there. And I appreciate to the developer what he's done in the other lot. I am a walker in town, and I use the Bank of America downtown, so that what they have done on that side of town to make it accessible is very positive for me. As an abutter, there's a couple of things I'd like them to consider, as well as the board to consider. One, the, I would say, I'm gonna come over here, because it's easier for me, and I have a loud voice, so this parking lot, to me, is a significant concern. Prior owners did not upkeep that parking lot. We had, I called the police for several incidences of nefarious behavior. There's been drug deals. There is massive amounts of trash from people coming up the bike path, going up to the liquor store or going into the Kohl's Plaza and using that as their dumping ground. Let, three weeks ago, I picked up four contractor bags worth of trash, empty bags, cans, et cetera. I would like to have considered that to be made green space and not be able to be a pass-through because it's currently used as a pass-through where trash, and you can go there today, there's three Dunkin' Donuts cups, at least one paper bag of garbage I haven't been able to pick up, and people use that lot and 21 Mannahan for behavior that shouldn't be happening in a residential area. I have Ring cameras that I can show you some of the behavior that has happened, which I've reported to town and DPW. I understand wanting to have access from the bike path, but I do, as a person that lives in that neighborhood, I do, I'm concerned because of how close we are to Lowell and what comes down that bike path day and night, cutting through into that parking lot and back, what that would do to the safety of the neighborhood. I am not opposed to having two fast casual restaurants there. I will put that on record. As someone that likes to walk, it would be great if I get up in the morning, walk up Mannahan, walk down 110 in a safe neighborhood, safe way, walk in, grab a cup of coffee, get home. It'd be my escape for my kids, and if my husband's watching, I'm sorry, heard me say that. The other ask I have is someone that lives abutting 20 Mann- 20 Mannahan. That lot has been neglected. It is overrun with weeds. It is overrun with vines that are growing in to, on to Mannahan Street, which makes it extremely unsafe. My neighbors and I are the ones that are continuing to do the upkeep on that side of the street. So if there's anything we can do, A, get rid of that, that side parking lot, and any landscaping, whether it's arboretis or other additional, like, green space shading that could block access to and from Mannahan Street through what is now a dirt lot filled with trash, and/or block any additional lighting or things that would come from the lot down to that end of the street, I would appreciate it.
Would, where, can you point out that?
Yeah, so.
That wasn't the parking lot.
Yeah, so I live, I live, so this is, I live here.
Yep.
There is a dirt path that comes through here, and there's a dirt path that comes from Morgan across. There is an old metal gate, and it is from my neighbors that are here down, it is filled with trash. People come into this parking lot at all hours of the night, park, leave trash, drinking parties. We've had people pull into this lot from behind the plaza and have parties in that empty Mannahan lot because there's no, there's nothing there to stop them. And this is all overgrown. There is, I don't, I don't, it's bittersweet and everything else growing into the street. It grows up all the trees. There's a huge pine tree right at the corner that I'm waiting for National Grid to have to take down because of the amount of vines. I love the fact that Mannahan Street is walkable to the bike path. I love that Mannahan Street's walkable to Kohl's. I use it to return Amazon. I use it to get stuff for my kids. I used to go to Best Fitness. I love that the plaza's there. I worry about that traffic area there and what may come off the bike path and then make it more of a security and safety issue as well as a trash issue, especially if people are coming off 110, coming down, having food, and instead of, there's no place to dispose anything, so let me just throw it in an empty lot.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. So I live on 14 Mannahan Street, so neighbors and.
Could we have your name, please?
Nicole Keo.
Thank you.
So that little random parking lot area that she was talking about, where a lot of misbehavior happens, is, it feels like it's our backyard, basically. So this is a, you know, kind of hard to tell. So this picture here shows from my driveway. You can see into that parking lot that we have actually blocked off. We got an okay from the prior owners, so sorry it's there now. But it was so uncomfortable to be out in my backyard with my children and have to call the cops because of many different things that would happen there. So, yeah, I totally would love. So yeah, I totally would love to also add if that could either be just negated altogether or a big giant fence up so that there's a lot more privacy happening. There's just a lot of stuff that we don't need to even mention there. Also with the, the snow removal and where the water goes. Our backyard, it ends up filling up with a lot of water. We've actually, because we have really bad rainy seasons, that extra snow melts on top of the water. We've had flooding in the basement. We have an older home. We don't have like a French drain or anything like that. So if it could be possible that the snow removal goes behind the next lot over when you come. So here's me and they usually will pile the snow sky high right here. But if you look at this property, there are doubling out, there's townhomes, but they have the Arbrevites and then there's this big empty field back here. That to me would be a lot better for all of that snow to go and melt here instead of right up against our backyard and then causing a lot of extra water damage. It takes months for the water to actually dry out in our yard. And again, it's actually added flooding into the basement on those really bad rainy seasons. So that was a big issue for us. So, and definitely not any bike path entrance because 20 Mannahan is directly across from my friend here's house and that would be awkward. And we have access. We can, they can go down Mannahan if they know that there's a coffee shop or whatever ends up being at the top of Kohl's. They're just going to ride their bikes to the top. I don't think there needs to be an additional cut through. I think I would like to see that just wiped out as far as that random parking. No one uses it anymore. The only time they did was when it was things that needed to be brought to the attention of the authorities. So that's, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Neil Lever for Mannahan Street. Just want the proponent and the board to know that about three or four tenths of a mile on the bike trail from the mall, there's a tent encampment. You can see two tents. They're about 50 yards off the rail trail, right before the overpass where 495 is. I think if some entity, some town entity addressed that, that might alleviate at least some of these problems. So I would hope that people look into that. I personally would be opposed to any fast food or fast casual because I think that would be an attraction and that tent encampment would grow significantly. I also have a lot of concerns about the traffic. I think any increase would go from a bad to a much worse situation. Even a little extra traffic, I think, would exponentially create problems. And I don't think the problem is necessarily the amount of the traffic. It's people coming in and out because you have to wait and take your turn while people come out of that left-hand exit. And that has a backup effect and four to five PM uncertain days, it is a parking lot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bobby Mitchell. My wife, Abby and I, we own the house in front of the Joan of Arc Bank. We live there with our daughter. We're obviously, we're opposed to having two restaurants built in front of where we live. Concerned about the, the scope and length of construction. There's a lot of improvements that are going to be happening in the space and you correct me, if you're going to be able to tell me. But I Googled it and it said it's about like five and a half months probably to build like a Chick-fil-A or some kind of
Can you speak into the mic just a little?
Oh, sorry. I mumbled too. So building those takes a long time. There's a lot of construction, like concrete's getting ripped up. It's very low. We have a 10-month-old daughter and her bedroom faces, so light pollution was a concern, which it sounds like has been addressed. That's a concern of ours as well. You mentioned, Anita, that the whole previous project, the whole neighborhood came out and it wasn't the best, you know, interest of the neighborhood. And you have a lot of people from the neighborhoods here saying it's not in the best interest of, I think, the neighborhood. And there's a lot of businesses here already. There are restaurants near there already. A big concern also is with traffic. We're not counting like DoorDash. Like, once new restaurants come up, we're going to have tons of drivers going in there bringing things to Lowell, bringing things to like whatever, Westford, wherever. And it's concerning to me that they didn't think to look at the cross streets. Those are right there. That's, I'm kind of wondering maybe what else wasn't addressed and maybe that peer-reviewed study will be able to tell us that. I, I understand I bought a house in a business district. I'm not clutching my pearls going, we can never have any new business in Chelmsford. But I think that, that scope of the project, where it is, what we already have in the area, I think it's going to inconvenience too many people. I, I'm hearing what they're saying about the traffic. Logically, I understand the traffic counters are counting. If it's a really popular place, that's a variable. I don't think you can count with that. If it's a, you know, certain restaurants are extremely popular and people are going to want to go to those, that's going to increase traffic. I mentioned the tent encampment. That was something I was thinking of earlier. I actually don't know what's going on in the hotel that's kind of down the street. A lot of them walk by my house. Some have tried to open my truck doors. I don't know who's, I actually really don't know what's going on in there. But adding, I think, more, I guess, resources or more like inexpensive food and stuff, I think that's going to draw more of that in there. And I'm sure I hit everything rough. I don't want to give other people time to talk. Yeah, that's really the most of what I have to say. I appreciate you guys showing up and I appreciate you guys listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Pearson. I live on 11 Mannahan Street. First off, I want to say I do appreciate any efforts that are made to improve the property. So it sounds like there's some good improvements coming. I have two concerns that kind of echo what we've heard before. I won't spend too much time on traffic because I know we've talked about it. And thank you for adding Mannahan Street to the study because it's a dead-end street. So our only egress out is onto Chelmsford Street. So anything that adds traffic makes it much more difficult. And then I do echo the concerns about privacy. So I'm at 11. I'm right across the street from Nikki's house. And I've witnessed some of what she's been talking about. And I think that's actually a good suggestion to maybe get rid of that lot. I've, you know, never seen anybody park there other than for some of the illegal activities that have happened there. So I think that's a really good suggestion. And then the other thing I wanted to ask. So I heard earlier with one of the other discussions that there's a requirement to have landscaping or a fence if residential property abuts commercial. So right now, the fence that runs along Mannahan Street is probably this high. It's more like a post and rail. So I don't know if we could get some sort of either privacy fencing or better landscaping. Because it seems like the landscaping improvements, at least if I'm understanding it correctly, are all focused on the restaurant area and not the back part. But I would like to see, like I said, fencing or better landscaping, high shrubbery or something that blocks the view from the road. So I appreciate you coming here and presenting. And like I said, any improvements that we can see to that mall area are great. I just want to make sure we address all the concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanne Anderson. I live on 6 Evergreen Street and I'm one of your precinct six town meeting reps, just so you know, for future voting. First of all, I want to thank the planning board. I want to thank the presenters. You guys have really answered almost all of the research that I did. So I kind of wish I knew the presentation before I did all the research. So a couple of things that I did want to bring up, one, and I think a lot of it has been brought up. First of all, the master plans, goals, ask for us to enhance the visual appearance through the creation of design guidelines for appropriate areas and to protect the character of the town's residential neighborhoods. So obviously, we all want to see that. Anita brought up John Dyark. I had actually made a list. I drove down Chelmsford Street today and literally almost every single business on the business side does look like a house. Okay, the liquor store doesn't look like a great house, but it does look like a house. The Endodontist did a great job. Still looks like a house. In front of the assisted living, there's, that's where my kid's orthodontist was. Looks like a house. So it would be great if we could absolutely have anything that goes up there fit with the character of what's already in the neighborhood. And I don't know, Evan, maybe you can answer this question for me. On the legal notice, it talks about, and we've heard these words a lot, to construct two fast casual restaurants with drive-throughs. And maybe the zoning bylaws in, online are not up to date. But we don't have a definition for fast casual restaurants, according to the zoning bylaws. There's no such thing. Is there?
No, you're correct.
Okay.
For purposes of zoning, it's just, it's just a restaurant with drive-through.
Okay, so the definition of a restaurant, I think most of us know the definition of a restaurant is one where you get a waiter, you get plates, you get silverware, you sit down, you pay people. The last sentence of a definition of a restaurant, it says, specifically says, "The term restaurant shall not include fast food establishments." Which I thought was really funny because the very next definition is called "fast food restaurant." Although it says we have no such thing. So a fast food restaurant, and I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but it basically says, "Because of the nature of the operation, it causes a large volume of frequent turnover of customers typically characterized by ordering food at a counter, self-service or semi-self-service, a menu board rather than individual menus, payment prior to consumption, no table service, disposable containers and utensils are used rather than reusable dinnerware." So what we're being asked to put here are fast food restaurants. And I think it's very important that you can sit there and say, oh, we're looking, we would love, personally, I would love a Chick-fil-A, thank you. I don't want McDonald's to get that double drive-through instead of Chick-fil-A. I want a decent restaurant. But we don't have a definition for that right now. So I would, you know, I think it's very important that the presenters understand that if you want to, you know, we all knew when we moved into these neighborhoods, I live on top of two shopping centers. I go one way to Market Basket. I go one way to the Chelmsford Mall from the end of my street. I use every store at the Chelmsford Mall except Carter's. And I, and my kids, my kids can walk, yeah, my kids are grown and flown, so. And my, and I walk, my kids, once they learned we're old enough, could walk over to Market Basket and buy stuff for me. So I love the area. But I would like to see something get put there. And, and again, a lot of the, a lot of the things that I had on my list here were taken care of, such as the Chelmsford Wetlands bylaw. The other, I was part of the zoning bylaw review committee, so we did definitions, which is what made me decide to look at the zoning. I was also a member of the SWAMPAC, which is the stormwater committee that was put together because as some of my neighbors who are here tonight know, some of these streets, not specifically off of Chelmsford Street too far, but do get some significant water and that is because the storm drains were built back in the 1950s and have never been upgraded. So I appreciate that the DPW has requested a stormwater because I can't afford to get any more water coming down my street, which slopes down from Chelmsford Street. And my street, you can't see the way the, the picture is right now. You'd have to move it up a little bit. But when you go to that, I am probably one of the only people who can get away with using that second entrance. And I go, oh, hello. I go diagonally across and right down my street because my street is right where Dalton Road's fork is. My street is right before that. My recommendation, if you can, oh, if I could talk to Mass DOT, that would make my day. In their infinite wisdom, they made that a, I noticed in the traffic study that I think was 150 pages long and I didn't read the whole thing. They made it a straight yellow line. So I basically break the law on a multi-time per day because I can't technically go down my street without going over two straight, two solid yellow lines. But I do it. And so do all my neighbors. You also can't go onto Dalton Road. It's also a solid yellow line. I looked, I actually drove down Chelmsford Street and was looking at where the solid yellow lines were. So I'm not going to go into traffic because we all know. But I, the one thing that I would say in regards to traffic would be, could you please also include when you're looking at traffic, the car wash that's also being built right down the street and what kind of traffic that's going to bring into the area? I mean, hey, I might as well get a coffee if I'm going to get my car washed. But you know, so people may go and hit both, but I think it's important to include that because the current study that was done for the Chelmsford Mall doesn't include any traffic that could be related to the car wash. I did, I honestly, you guys did a great job with your presentation, so I'm like, I don't really have much to say here. The landscaping, I appreciate. I did have a question on, you know, we do have a residential home in the shopping center section and where that, I'm just going to call it Starbucks, is going to go. I did notice in the picture that there was only 12 feet of landscaping between the end of the Starbucks and the, and the property line. And I, what my understanding is, is it's supposed to be a 30-foot distance to buffer the resident next door. And no part of the buffer can be a building, a structure paved or used as parking. So I was kind of curious about if they're going to go for a zoning waiver for that buffer. And the other, the other thing is in related to lights, I appreciate, I'm very happy to see that they may consider putting a new sign up there. I would make a request that they follow the actual sign bylaw, the lighting sign, lighting bylaws that say that no sign within 300 feet of a residential district shall be illuminated between 11 and 7. And any non-conforming sign that's freestanding is supposed to be 15 feet from the street, which hopefully this one is because I assume it's non-conforming the way it is. And I hope it will look nice because I went to the zoning board of appeals for the one for Market Basket. It came out, looked so much better. And I think the picture I saw of the one for the Chelmsford Mall did as well. And my last thing that I have to say is related to the architecture and I totally, I think I already mentioned that. We needed to look more like the neighborhood. And I, again, I appreciate everything that has been presented tonight. And I look forward to coming back to another meeting and hearing more about this. I am not thrilled about this, don't get me wrong. I don't want two restaurants there because I agree with most of the people. I have no choice but to drive on Chelmsford Street and the average miles per hour is not 30. It's like 10. And I, oh, one last traffic thing, I apologize, is the light to have people churn from Chelmsford Street to take a left off of Chelmsford Street down into the mall. I go to the mall all the time between my four cats and Kohl's. One day I was in, I started to pay more attention to it. One day I was number four to take the left and I basically took it on the yellow churning red before it turns blinking yellow. That's when I went. So as car number four. Car number seven, I actually only made it because I ran the yellow light for the whole thing. So if you speak to the Mass Department of Transportation, I think that left lane green arrow light would need to be extended because I can absolutely see the cars backing up. And although it's technically one lane, it's kind of two lanes. Again, I would, if there's a way, I can email somebody with all my recommendations for that area. I would love to do that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Martin Roke. I'm on 5 Sunset Ave, which is on the 110 side of the road. I'm not on the other side of Dalton. I'm not a public speaker, so you'll forgive me if my voice trembles. But I just had a few things to say. You know, I, I walk this neighborhood all the time with my children and my dog. And, you know, people drive through our neighborhood already really, really quickly. We've actually had multiple studies done on our streets that led to no signage and nothing helping. Our roads, Subway, Sylvan, Sunset and Seneca are all cut-throughs. There are no restrictions whatsoever on our side of Dalton, on this side of Dalton. There are no restrictions. So people use those cut-throughs as fast as they want. There's nothing that's ever been done about it. I worry for my across-the-street neighbor who has two very small children. During rush hour, it's, if they're out there by themselves, I forget it. They're just, you know, there's no luck. You know, one of the things that I wanted to address was that, you know, there's a lot of comparison that keeps happening between the stuff that happened in Chelmsford in the Chelmsford Center area with the Marshall's Plaza and what's happening over here at the Chelmsford Mall. You can't really compare the two, in my opinion, because what's happening at the Chelmsford Mall is undeveloped. What was at Marshall's, there was already a development there. So there's, you can't really be comparing the two. And you may have done beautiful things with the Marshall's area. That's not what's going to happen over here. We're, we're talking about three major highways, 495, Route 3 and We're talking about three major highways, 495, Route 3, and the connector, that are all going to have signage saying, you know, "Get off here for food." And 14,000, I think, is a very ridiculous, it's not, it's going to be a whole lot more than that, as far as new traffic coming into our neighborhood, putting our children and our pets at risk, and making it pretty much impossible for us to go anywhere. There have been times where I've wanted to go to Lowe's, you know, do some home improvement projects. I've had to come out of Sunset, take a right onto 110, get on 495 to get on the little connector, to get off over at the cross-point exit so that I can go to Lowe's, because it would take less time than to just take a left out of Sunset Ave and go through past Market Basket and this area. So, yeah, it's a, this, you know, 30 mile per hour thing is a joke, because that's not actually the case. I also, you know, wanted to, I was really disappointed that the Chelmsford Police didn't have anything to say in their letter. That was pretty disturbing, actually, knowing that, you know, crime, of course, happens everywhere. You're not going to get away from it. But they've got to give some feedback into what they project as, you know, potential crime with these two fast food, and we're calling a duck a duck, it's fast food. You know, you got drive-throughs, it's fast food. So, with these two fast food restaurants being here, you know, the crime is going to increase. We're bringing in people that are looking for lower-priced items. They're going to cross over and into our area, and I, I don't want to sound rude or anything, but like, it's the reality. We're going to have more crime, there's going to be more litter, there's going to be a lot more activity in our neighborhood. And, you know, I, like I said, I have children that are in this neighborhood, and I don't want to put them at risk. So, that's pretty much all I had to say, but I would really like to ask whoever it be to, to try to get the police to kind of give some input into this, because I think that would be some valuable information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob DeForge, 10 Cypress Street. It was mentioned that some comments had been sent to Howard Stein-Hudson regarding the traffic from Mr. Belansky. Was that the questions I sent to the DPW this morning?
I believe I was, Tony Repucci forwarded me that email.
Yes.
I forwarded it to Katie.
Okay, I won't waste my neighbor's time rehashing everything I wrote in there. I did just want to comment on the, the traffic study. Mr. LaValle, you had mentioned including the roads between 110 and Dalton Road. I'd like to add that the cut-through traffic extends, you know, Sylvan Ave all the way up to Delwood to go north of that Stedman Street intersection. There is a sign on Delwood Ave that says, you know, "No left turn between," I think, I don't know if it's 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. I don't really think that's enforced, so, you know, I don't know who follows that, but I don't really think that's doing anything there. Non-traffic questions, so as far as the CC zoning, would they be able to build restaurants without drive-throughs with no planning board approval? Is it only the drive-through aspect of this that's requiring the planning board approval?
The special permit. It's fast, the drive-through triggers a special permit.
So, they could build a local restaurant that people could sit down at without even coming to the planning board?
They would still need a zoning permit, likely site plan, but not a special permit.
Okay. I also wanted to comment on, you know, the lot being full. I think they said 288 spaces. I've been in that lot, and when the Jim and Coles are both very busy, the lot seems much fuller than that. So, I'm not sure if that needs to be looked at again. And can I ask who the peer reviewer is of that? Are they funded by the town? The peer reviewer of the traffic study, sorry.
The planning board will contract directly with the peer reviewer.
Okay.
It will be at the applicant's expense.
Okay, so, so they are an independent third party then?
Very independent.
Okay.
They report directly to the planning board.
Okay. There was a short discussion on taxes. How do we know that revenue to a Starbucks won't just take money from local coffee shops and be a complete wash for taxes? That's kind of a concern for me. We've got five local coffee shops heading down 110 into the town center. There's only one Dunkin' that they're competing with, and bringing in another massive conglomerate chain like Starbucks might just take money from our local businesses. I did a quick calculation. It said the average Chipotle, which is a restaurant that's been mentioned before in this context, has a $3 million annual gross revenue at the Chelmsford meal tax rate of 0.75%. That's $22,500 in taxes for Chelmsford, also known as less than $1 per resident. I would happily pay $1 per restaurant to not see these go up. And finally, I'd just like to address how this whole process is occurring. It was mentioned that they might get the permits and then come back later for, you know, a more detailed discussion of what those restaurants would be. You know, there's kind of a psychological phenomenon known as the foot-in-the-door effect. You ask someone for a small thing, and then you come back later and ask for something else that maybe you wouldn't have gotten in the first place. So, I'd just like to emphasize that perhaps we should have more information on what these restaurants should be before, before approving these special permits potentially. And that's all I have. Thank you to the board for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shannon Forsyth. My husband and I live at 234 Chelmsford Street, so we are directly across from Jeanne-Dark and the Chelmsford Mall. A lot of my concerns, first, I should say thank you to the presenters. You were very clear and excellent in the board as well. A lot of my concerns have already been addressed today. We are not in agreement with either of these restaurants going up. Not only is traffic on 110 a major concern for us, but the cut-through traffic that has already been spoken about is incredibly scary. I walk with my dog multiple times a day. We have two young grandchildren that are always visiting us, and the amount of traffic increasing, especially on the side streets, is scary. Right now, kids still ride bikes and play in that area, and I'm worried about the safety of those kids. Outside of that, I'm worried about the smell with grease traps, as well as the exhaust of cars idling in the drive-through lines, or the significantly higher levels of traffic on 110 or on the side streets waiting to get onto 110, also idling. Is there going to be any sort of air pollution study done to make sure that we don't have increase in poor air quality in the area? I'm also very, very concerned with trash. As someone that walks all the time, there is trash along 110 that is only going to get worse with people littering that, that we can't control the people that are littering, but we also can't control the amount of napkins or straws that escape out of drive-through window or just happen to fly out of your car when you're driving away. So, that's going to increase. And then, again, noise pollution is somewhat connected to the idling cars and everything else, people beeping because they're not getting out. We already have a lot of noise, it's only going to get worse. And then, the parking lot's already really, really dangerous. If you ever try to take a left out of Coles to go back up to the lights, you take your life in your hands sometimes. I appreciate you doing the Phase 1 changes. Is there any way that you can implement some of these parking lot changes now to avoid this being an issue regardless of whether or not the restaurants, the fast food restaurants go in? And then, my other question is, you did an awesome job at Grist Mill. Why not do some sort of building like that? We have a housing crisis in this area right now. Why not take this space and do something that helps our community? We'd still get the tax revenue, but we'd also help people that need homes. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
John DeConde Jr., 3 Wildwood Street. I just want to let you know, I get about two inches of dirt from your house, from your area now. My house is located at 3 Wildwood Street, at the corner of Dalton Road. The dust comes across the street into my house, as well as all the bags, all the cups, all the things come right into my house. I also want to suggest, maybe we put stop signs at Mannahan Street, Sunset Street, Dalton Road. That's the only way you're going to get out, people. Go there at 5:00 o'clock, go there at 3:00 o'clock, go there at 6:00 o'clock. The traffic is immense. And not only that, every time there's an accident on 495, we get the traffic. Big trucks come flying down the street, and, and I'll tell you, when they pull into Dalton Road off of Chelmsford Street, 50% of the cars don't give a signal they're coming down. We've had three of our grandchildren hurt, have car accidents, because no one puts on a light telling you, "We're going down Dalton Road." And also want to tell you that the traffic light at Stop &amp; Shop is owned by Stop &amp; Shop. And, and they can control how that light goes. So, every time one car comes out of Stop &amp; Shop, it backs up the traffic, because now the traffic can't get out of, I'm sorry, Market Basket. And, and it backs up the traffic all the way down, past, it goes all the way down on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday noontime. It goes all the way down to, it'll go to the new car wash. And, and nobody can move, because if you're, if you're trying to get out on a Dalton Road, your light backs them up, and, and nobody will let you out unless there's a nice, kind person that says, "Stop," and they say, "Come on out." And, and also, there's already a fast food. Go to Market Basket and watch how many people buy stuff in Market Basket between 11:00 and 1:00 o'clock. It's like a circus in there, there's so many people in there. You know, and so, I'm telling you, you've got to look at things, and you've got to come down and look at the traffic itself, especially when there's a traffic accident on 1, on 495. You cannot move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ralph LeBalski, 10 Stuntset Ave. My wife and I are 44-year residents of the Westlands. I had some traffic stories, but that would be redundant, I'll be very brief. I want to use something that Anita said earlier a couple of times. Does the project bring value to the neighborhood? Now, that looks a heck of a lot better than it does right now. That's the positive. But the traffic issues are immense, and I would simply say to you, this would not bring overall value to the neighborhood. It would make the issues that we're dealing with worse. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to beat him, 51 years on Seneca Ave. Now, you've all been down Seneca Ave to our favorite liquor store, I'm sure. So, I speak that the traffic there, of Field Rep there did a marvelous job explaining, we love a good restaurant, I think, but without a drive-through. We, we could have less traffic, we think. Cars will pull in off the street, you're not, you go one coming, one going, one coming, which blocks up the traffic. So, thank you all for your time. And I hope we can just slow a little of the, the traffic down. And it's only going to get more. The more young people we have, the cars aren't decreasing, the traffic is increasing. Now, there's, you know, less, less young'uns on the bus, they're all driving their cars now to the high school. There's traffic galore, so thank you for your time, and help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Richard Hadad, 212 Dalton Road. I've been there for six years. I got a two-year-old and a two-month-old. Basically, my view is this intersection right here, across 110, my house is on Dalton Road there. People go about 50 miles an hour down Dalton Road. I've never seen someone pulled over for it. I walked down Subway to get my son from daycare. They drive 50 miles an hour down that road. I wave my arms at them, never see a cop parked on that road. I'm worried about cockroaches, rats from two fast food restaurants. I'm worried about signage, I'm worried about the trees getting cut down, they're already there. I'm worried about trash. I'm worried about cooking 200 burgers an hour at a fast food place and all the smoke that's going to pour over into our neighborhood. I mean, developers are going to develop, right? That's what you guys do, engineers are going to engineer, that's what they do. And you guys plan. If you want to listen to our comment, I think that's great. But I personally am not in favor of fast food. I could be convinced of a restaurant, I get it. The lots aren't the greatest-looking thing in the world, you know what I mean? But I don't want fast food restaurants there. We're going to have headlights pointed up at our neighborhood. As it is, you said you're upgrading the signage. I think you can see the Coles sign from space. So, if you could not make that brighter, that would be great. And it's on until 11:00 every night. I mean, my house was built in 1920, and I don't think the people that built it did a wraparound and porch with the intention to stare at two fast food restaurants. And I sit out there a lot. So, I mean, kind of just echoing what everyone else said, but traffic is terrible. I don't think this is going to make it better. So, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Katie, did you have any other comments?
Not for tonight, no.
Okay. All right.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Yep, sorry about that.
Again, Adam. I just want to say, you know, everyone, I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. This is a project that, I'm not going to ram this project through. We're not going to put crappy restaurants in here. I've already turned down leases from McDonald's. It's not going to be fast food. If, if we're going to put restaurants in here, they're going to be higher-quality restaurants. But I've heard a lot of the comments tonight, I think I have a lot to think about. You know, I also want to mention that, you know, these are, these are small buildings. We've added a ton of landscaping, they're, they're not expensive buildings. Each of these buildings are like a million to a million and a half. We've spent quite a bit on our soft costs at this point. I mean, you know, it's going to reach a point where it just may not make business sense for us to go forward. But I'm hearing the community. I'm going to go back with my team and really kind of digest everything and, and see if this still makes sense for us to move forward. I think there's a reasonable chance that we may withdraw the application. But I, I definitely, I'm hearing concerns about the community. I will say that we won't do a bad job if we decide to go forward. We'll try and put the best, and, and, you know, right now, I mean, there are a lot of choices. You know, you could do a bank in here and have no traffic, for example. But do we really need another bank in town? I don't know. I mean, there's other types of users. We, we could potentially do a sit-down restaurant with most, most, without a drive-through. But the demand from the, the types of restaurants, which are, you know, like a Chipotle or a Panera, a lot of these groups, because of the pandemic, they all want drive-throughs now. So, there's more demand for those types of spaces. But we will not fall on the, if we decide to move forward, we will not be bringing in low-quality operators that I think don't add value. It has to look good from a site standpoint, an architecture standpoint, and, you know, the only thing I have to say is that, you know, we're going to fall back on the things that we've done well in this community. And so, there has to be some amount of trust that we're going to do a good job. But this isn't going to be a situation where we're going to put bad retailers in here and generate smoke and trash. I won't allow that at my property. And we've only owned this property for, for five months. I mean, I have to be allowed some time to operate it. And the Phase 1 improvements, it's a, it's a pretty big spend. It's $800,000 on this first investment to get all the repainting and everything done. It's expensive, but we will make this a better location. We will make improvements, we will build relationships. I have a really good property management team, we will be meeting with neighbors. So, I'm just going to leave it at that. I want to think, you know, quite a bit about this night, it's been very helpful for me. And if we decide to move forward, we'll try and do the very best job that we can. Like I said, this isn't an investment that we make, and we're not looking to, you know, grow the income quickly and sell it to somebody else. That's, that's not what this is about. This is a long-term, you know, hold. It's an indefinite hold, we don't really sell properties too often. So, we make slow and careful, long-term investments to make our properties better in the communities that we work in. And just leave it at that for now, but I just want to say, one, I appreciate everybody's time tonight on this board. I know it's an incredible investment of your time. And I really appreciate the comments that I've heard. And I really appreciate the comments that I've heard from the neighborhood. And, and, you know, we'll try and, you know, if we decide to move forward, we'll, we'll do the, the very best job that we can. But also, I think there's a reasonable chance here that we don't move forward. And, and so that's a possibility as well. And, you know, we'll take a look at everything and, and make some decisions and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I wasn't going to answer any of the comments tonight, but anybody who saw me, I was frantically writing every address down and every comment down so that I can go back to them tomorrow and also digest with the team, as I always do for every meeting with this board. So we appreciate your time tonight. And we look forward to working with the team to come up with the best possible project for the site.
All right, thank you. So at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Can we hold on a second? Because the, the residents on Mannahan? Mannahan, sorry. Brought up something about the, and is that even Chelmsford, or is that Lowell? Do we know? And can we have?
Chelmsford, I was on the bike path, and I saw more than two tens.
All right, I mean, just because, I mean, I know this is not related to the project, per se, but it is something that was brought up here. Maybe, Evan, we can maybe bring it back down to the, to the town manager, just to...
Yeah, I'll certainly email the manager and police department.
To make...
I don't take my children on the bike path anymore.
It's probably on their property, because it's to, when you're in the state.
Can we?
And you can see it clearly.
Can we?
If we can just bring it to the police and to the town manager's attention, because it did get brought up here, that would be appreciated.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing till next meeting.
Is it next meeting, or do we want to move it? Will we have time for a peer review?
That's a good question, how, what's the next meeting looking like?
Unlikely the peer review would be ready for next meeting, but I would suggest let's just continue to the July meeting.
Okay, we can always recontinue.
Yeah, we can recontinue, we can talk about the, the...
Some of the other aspects.
The site plan.
Right. Okay. Then I will move to, to continue the public hearing until our next regular meeting.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
All right. We have gone through the agenda. Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Next, hold on, next meeting? All right, yes. Next meeting is July twenty-third.
We'll have the opening of 191 Riverneck Road.
Folks, folks, we're still in session. Folks, we're still in session. Can you please take conversations outside? Thank you.
One is towards Lowell, and the other is right before the 495.
Okay, thank you.
I could only say two, there's probably a lot.
All right.
All right. Folks, folks, please, outside. We're still in session.
I can use my teacher voice.
Thank you, thank you, Phil. Appreciate it.
All right, Evan, what do we have next meeting?
So I mentioned the opening of the 191 Riverneck Road public hearing.
Yep.
We talked about... The, the outdoor contractor's yard?
Yep.
The contractor's yard. So what was the...
We talked about NIMCO coming in potentially for the housing production plan presentation. You've continued the zoning public hearings.
That's going to be another...
It's going to be another long night. I'm not going to have, probably won't have too much discussion on the zoning. I don't think we'll have any more to talk about on the Middlesex Street.
Shut the door.
Yeah, we're almost done.
You're talking about the, the meeting about that other zoning thing?
Yeah.
So that meeting is that Monday?
Twenty-first.
Before the, you know, the twenty-first. Is my mic even working? I don't think it is. The twenty-first.
You have a marble mouth. It's going to come on the twenty-first.
So we might have stuff to talk about there. All right. Yeah, it's going to be a long meeting.
Six-thirty?
Yeah.
Six-thirty start?
I think the highlight would be Riverneck, because you said the other items may be limited, the new material.
Can we talk about, are we going to have two meetings in August? Must we?
With everything going on, probably.
It's scheduled for the thirteenth and twenty-seventh.
We should try and kill the twenty-seventh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we might want to consider that.
Is that one right before, like, Labor Day? Is that one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that is right before Labor Day.
When is Labor Day?
No, that's after Labor Day.
No, Labor Day is the first or second. It's before.
Labor Day, September first.
I know, because school starts that week.
So, yeah, let's kill the twenties, this August, twenty-seventh.
Are we okay with not doing the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got some stuff tying me up then, too, so...
We have two meetings between now and then still.
Yeah.
We'll just...
So we'll close the, we'll close the zoning public hearing on...
That will have been three meetings.
Thirteenth.
And hopefully they'll get shorter each one.
Yeah, they should be. All right. All right, we'll kill the twenty-seventh meeting.
Oh, yay.
It's planned for a six-thirty start for the next meeting.
Are you doing six-thirty start for all of them?
No.
Only for next one, and we'll see how the one after goes.
We do six-forty-five. Nah, you don't have to go home.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Oh, it doesn't need a second, does it?
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Good, bye.
Anita, motion. Mike, second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.